Good afternoon and welcome to our May 31st meeting. Before the Phoenix City Council convenes our formal meeting, we will host a meeting of the Park Central Community Facilities District Board. Let's call to order the Park Central Community Facilities Directors. Will the clerk call the roll?
Board Member Conlon. Board Member Gervais.
Here.
Board Member Guardado.
Here.
Board Member Hodge Washington.
Here.
Board Member O'Brien. Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Robinson.
Here.
Board Member Stark.
Here.
Board Member Waring.
Here.
Vice Chair Ansari.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
We have one item for today's meeting, the consideration of the district's budget and financial forecast. Do we have a motion?
Is Mr. Conlon so moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. Thank you to our board members Conlon and Gervais for joining us. We are adjourned. And now, we will move to our formal meeting for May 31st. We will begin with an invocation and invite Police Chaplain John Taylor to join us.
Thank you all. Please bow as I pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for all who are gathered here today, and we're grateful for the opportunity to be here. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in our great nation. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting, and we ask that you would guide and direct the council so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. I pray for the agenda that's set before them today. Please give them wisdom as to what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city. Thank you for helping them to accomplish their work and their goals this day. In your holy name, I pray, amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Pastor, will you lead us? Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor and Councilwoman. We will call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mario Barajas and Carmen Cota are with us to provide interpretation. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you said, Mayor, my name is Mario Barajas, and together with my colleague Carmen Cota, we'll be serving as today's Spanish interpreters for our city council formal meeting. And I'll take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hola buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a la reunión formal del Consejo Municipal. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y junto con mi colega Carmen Cota, estaremos sirviéndoles hoy como interpretes a los de habla hispana. Deseamos pedirles de antemano, si es que van a estar dando un comentario público, por favor, hable con lentitud, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada una o dos oraciones para que podamos interpretarles lo que están diciendo de la manera más completa posible. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Will the city attorney please explain the role of public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Item... Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-7112 through 7117, S-49701 through 49807, and resolutions 22123 through 22128.
Item one is boards and commissions. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Mayor and City Council Boards and Commissions nominations as revised.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. Thank you to the distinguished group of Phoenix leaders who are serving on our boards and commissions. We will now ask them to come forward to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office, state your office, according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you for stepping up to serve our great city. The council members would like to personally congratulate you if you would come behind the desk. Our boards and commissions have helped us be a much stronger city, and we are excited to welcome our commissioners. Thank you. The City of Phoenix serves in an advisory role to the State of Arizona on liquor licenses, and we will turn to that portion of our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 2 through 13.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 14 through 178 except the following: Items 40 through 45, 47, 66, 73, 87, 93, 98, 116, 125, 126, 127, 135, 138, 144, 157, 174, 175, 176, 177, and 178, noting that item 46 is continued to June 14th, 2023. Item 47 is as corrected and excluding these items for virtual public comment, item 47 and 177. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Item 25, item 70, and item 154. That's item 25, item 70, and 154.
And before we take that motion, could the staff confirm whether the speaker for 25 is still with us? Okay, our staff has indicated the speaker for 25 is not with us. So we could put 25 back in?
Yes, Mayor.
Would that be okay with you, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next go into special proceedings to adopt our capital improvement program resolution and budget ordinances. Item 40 is a public hearing on the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program. I now declare the hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? All right. We'll close the public hearing. Item 41 is the adoption of the 2023-28 capital improvement program. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move adoption of Resolution 22127, the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program.
Second.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Hey. Item 41 is the adoption of the 2023-28 capital... I'm sorry. Item 42 is a public hearing on the adoption of the tentative 23-24 annual public budget ordinance. Declare the hearing open. Is there anyone wishing to speak? We do, okay, we do have a speaker. Denise?
Yes, Mayor, we have Ann Ender.
All right. Ann Ender, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Sorry it took me so long. But Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor Ansari, and council members, I just, I wanted to thank the council, and I want to thank City Manager Burton and Barton, sorry, and Amber Williamson and their team for crafting this amazing budget that I believe really addresses the needs and the priorities of the city. Impressive to me is also the attention to and the funding of all employees, current employees and future employees. That, I think, says so much about how this city feels about the folks at work here. And of course, close to my heart, the funding for public safety is so critical. Fund our fire department to be able to help bring down the time with the calls for service, and of course, the training and the new programs that the police department have. So I just wanted to say thank you for supporting this, and I appreciate the time to come up here and do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. Item 43 is the adoption of the 23-24 annual budget. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I move that item 43, being ordinance S-49709, the tentative 2023 to 2024 annual budget, be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Ansari. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item 45 is the adoption of the tentative 23-24 reappropriated funds budget. Vice Mayor. All right. Item 44 is the adoption of the tentative 23-24 capital funds budget.
Mayor, I move that item 44, being ordinance S-49791, the tentative 2023 to 2024 capital funds budget, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 45 is the adoption of the tentative 23-24 reappropriated funds budget.
Mayor, I move that item 45, being ordinance S-49710, the tentative 2023 to 2024 reappropriated funds budget, be adopted.
Second.
Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Yay. Thank you to everyone who worked hard to bring the budget forward and the many residents who participated in our meetings, as well as the city staff who helped craft the budget and support those meetings. We next go to an exciting item, 47, which is related to the pay ordinance. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I motion to approve as corrected per the May 31st, 2023 memo issued by the Human Resources Director, David Matthews.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does any council member wish to provide comments before we go to public comment?
I would like to.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I had some constituents bring to my attention that there were some concerns with a couple of the comp and class areas. David, could you explain a little bit on the corrected memo, what we're doing today?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. The corrected memo corrects three errors...
Your mic on?
I believe it is. There you go. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. The corrected memo that was submitted this morning corrects three positions that were civilians in the police department to correct some errors that we found late yesterday as far as the alignment within the department.
Okay. And I appreciate you working so quickly to make sure that that alignment was fixed prior to us doing approval today. I would also like to ask a couple of questions. Another group that reached out to me was local 493 for the fire department, and we're very, they're very grateful for the class and comp study, but there were still some concerns regarding the engineer classification. So can we talk a little bit about what is going on with that classification?
Yes, Mayor, members of council. So the concern that has been brought forward by 493 to me has to do with where engineers land in the pay structure, so not the pay structure itself, but which step they go into in the new pay structure. So what I would like to mention is that this class and comp study is being implemented according to our pay ordinance and how other class and comp studies have been implemented, where an individual will go into the new pay plan at a step that is closest to their current rate of pay without going under. Any change to that process would have a significant budget impact.
And are there any steps we'll take in the future to look at this particular classification?
Mayor, members of council, again, the pay structure, meaning the top of the range, is where it should be according to our study. I believe what the concern is, is what step individual will go to. So they may go to step 14 or 15 out of a 17-step plan. So as they get their merit dates, they'll move up through that pay structure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Guardado, and then Councilman Waring, and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a very, sorry for the back noise, but I had to stay home today. But I'm very excited for this item. Super excited and thankful for city staff to be working very, very hard on this. Since I first came onto this council in 2019, the most common issue I would hear from departments and briefings was a consistent lack of staffing. That was the common thread that laid behind the issues we saw in the last couple of years. It was the same in my neighborhoods. I could not leave a single community meeting without hearing from residents upset about being put on hold for half an hour, two forty-five minutes, to make a report on Crime Stop. During the pandemic, the first staffing crisis we had was our 911 operators. I, together with my colleagues, had to push really hard to making sure that we were able to change those wages, studied and raised them so that we can retain employees and ensure our current employees were not being overworked. The tragic death of Pamela Cooper, a 911 operator who was pushed to work a 16-hour mandatory overtime shift after having recovered from COVID-19, show the urgency of this issue. And again, I want to thank my colleagues for their support on making sure that we made the changes that needed to be made to not have something like this ever happen again. Across our city, residents saw their bulk trash pile up as we struggled to hire and retain our public workers, solid waste equipment operators. Again, low pay saw senior workers leave the city, and we could not hire new employees quick enough. It got so bad that I was receiving emails and texts from residents with the bulk trash piled five feet high. Again, we led to push to urgently address the city, to deal with this issue with our city manager. And again, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Lori, for always listening and making sure that we were able to deal with this issue. But the list continued on, from not being able to open our city pools because of our lack of lifeguards and pool managers, to the lack of staff in the Head Start programs. Low pay for our city workers had led to very consequences for the services we provide our residents. This is why I am so happy today to finally be voting on a comprehensive improvement to wage for our city workers. Our workers have gone through a lot. They went from a recession in 2007 to this awful pandemic that we just got through. So I'm very thankful for all of our workers, for all of our essential workers that went through some really tough times in the last 10 to 15 years. And I'm excited that we're finally going to compensate everyone as we move forward. You know, again, huge shout out to our staff. I know, Dave, you and I went rounds and rounds and rounds and tried to figure out how faster could we make this happen? So thank you for your leadership on this. I know, Lori, I think we started the conversation with you as well. So thank you for all of your support. And I think we started the conversation probably with Ed Zerker, but really thankful to you, Jeff, for really making this happen and pushing this forward. And also thankful for my colleagues that will be voting yes on this today. It's something that's been needed for a very long time. And I think now, you know, we will have a lot more workers that will stay and work for the city, and we will be able to continue to push to hire in those open positions that we still have, and looking forward to support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilman Waring, followed by Councilwoman Pastor, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Councilwoman O'Brien, I talked to the firefighters as well. And what I took away from it was, they first, they emphasized they were satisfied. But second, you know, they had a chart with the different jobs. So the chief was at the top, and then working now to the newest recruit. It sounded like maybe the folks in the top-third bracket, I think it was broken up by pay and title, so they were fine. The people in the bottom-third were fine. It was sort of the middle group that seemed to have an issue. I'm sure you've probably seen their chart. I don't have a copy myself. But, you know, what I took away was they, you know, other people were going to be able to advance faster. I think they talked about it was going to take four and a half years or something to advance through. I could be misremembering, but the way I took it was four and a half years for, I guess, somebody to get a benefit from what we're doing here today, whereas the other two groups of firefighters and then staffers all around the city were going to get the benefit a lot quicker. And that was understandably if true, frustrating for the folks in that middle. If that's true, maybe you can address that too, but, or am I just wrong? But is there a way for us to address that without having to wait four and a half years? Or do a whole nother study? Or change the whole city code? Is there some way we could do it a little more expedited than that?
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Waring. I believe where that concern comes from is how far off a market a position is. So the further off a market, the longer it's going to take someone to get back to the top. So if two employees are at top step and your position is only, you know, 6% off-market, you may get to that top step because you only have one step to go in one year. When other classifications, like the middle of that chart that you're speaking of are further off a market, it's going to take the merits, a few more merit increases, which are annual, for those individuals to get back to top step.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. But it just seems like, I guess, if I interpret what you're saying, and I understand this is a really complicated process. You guys did a great job putting a lot of puzzle pieces. It's like you did a 2,000-piece puzzle of the Grand Canyon or something. So I applaud you for your tenacity in doing it. But that almost sounded to me, if I was just listening and knew nothing about this, like the people who are already furthest behind are also going to take the longest to catch up. Is that, that kind of pains me to hear, if true.
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Waring. The way to answer that is we're using our merit system to move people through the steps, just like all other class and comp studies we've done. So if your position doesn't have any additional steps added on to it, you, the vendor came back and said you are at market. There's no room for growth there. However, if your position is off a market, there is that future earning potential that individuals get to. Each step is 5%, so annually, those individuals that are off a market will receive 5% plus whatever negotiated changes occur.
Let me ask this. If you don't want to answer, I understand. I mean, is this... Let me ask this. If you don't want to answer, I understand. I mean, is this, this is the first I heard of it, I think it was yesterday. So, and I don't think I've heard the same thing from any other group. And the police, we've had this in place for a while, and I, I don't think I heard a single complaint, and that's a bigger group in terms of population. I, I mean, are they right to be complaining? Is it?
Mayor, members of council.
They feel like singled out, I guess is my word for what they were telling me.
Councilman Waring, the way I would respond to that is, this is the same way we've implemented all other class and comp studies, including the police class and comp study that was implemented last year.
Is there anything we can do about this, with bonuses or anything like that?
Any, any change to that process whatsoever would have a significant budget impact that would have to be looked at through BNR.
I did understand it wouldn't be free. Got that far in school, but, all right, well, thank you. Maybe it's something we could discuss. You know, Councilwoman O'Brien and I are on the Public Safety Committee. Maybe that's something that could come up to just see kind of what we're talking about. You know, again, this is relatively new news to me, but I appreciate your indulgence, and if there's anything we could do, I'd appreciate that, but I get that it's complicated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Waring, Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I just want to mention Local 493 is supportive of the class and comp. The area that they are concerned about is in the engineering rank, and that they're 25% behind other cities. And so as we're having this dialogue, I would like to, or I would like to know what is the process of looking at those, those ranks? And what ends up happening if they're 25% behind, it's, it's, it's too hard to promote, and they don't want to promote because they're behind other cities, and they're jumping to other cities. So I would like to have a commitment of, of, from staff of saying, we will look at these, before you do that, we will look at these things. The other thing is the same thing with Aspetia. Aspetia is also, they're, they're grateful for this, but there are gaps within this whole process. So I would like a timeline of when HR will look at those gaps and then close the gaps so that then employees are at hole, placed hole, and able then to continue on with the city, because I would hate to lose them. So.
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, so our, our plan for implementation is, is with a council vote today, the pay structures that are part of the packet as corrected will be implemented on August 7th. Immediately following that implementation, but between now and then, our staff will be figuring out where all of the employees land in the new pay structure. After August 7th, our, our plan is to circle back with every department head individually to find those, those pain points or those gaps, as you said, in their structure for their department. And then we will come up with our ways to correct those, and there's many avenues that can go for those corrections. The items that need to come back to council will be coming back to council, probably starting this fall with those corrections for, to fill those gaps, as you mentioned.
Okay, so what I heard is we will be looking at those gaps, fill them. We will be coming back in fall as the, I want to say, the most essential worker space, and then they will continue to move throughout the year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and then Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said in my comments on the budget a couple of weeks ago, I truly believe that this update to our class and compensation for our employees is one of the most significant actions that we have taken as a council in many years, so I'm very excited. We cannot deliver top-notch services for our residents without quality and well-compensated employees who really feel like they are getting what they deserve for the job, so I'm really excited about this. I'm especially eager to hire on more park rangers. I think the Parks Department is one that very much needs additional support. Very excited to bring on more staff to our Planning Department, who are doing critical work to address our housing shortage. And Councilwoman Guardado pointed out many of the challenges we've had in our Public Works Department and our Water Department, so thank you for all the hard work on this. I did have the similar questions around the, the firefighters and the engineers in particular, so I appreciate your response. And just want to thank you all for the hard work on this, because I think once we really implement this first wave of wage increases, we're really starting to get on a better track and set an example of what well-paid employees who are running the fifth-largest, fastest-growing city in the country should be getting paid. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson.
Mayor, thank you very much. I would be beating a dead horse if I asked the questions I had prepared. Well, I won't do that, but I will say, Mr. Matthews and to city manager and their staff, the employees that I have spoken to are overwhelmingly happy, grateful for the efforts that have been put forward to ensure that they are the highest-paid employees around, and deservedly so. So I wanted to make sure everyone did understand that, from, based on what Mr. Matthews has told us, the, the issues, the concerns that we all have, especially about the fire engineer position, that, that's going to be looked at. And, you know, I've been around long enough to know when someone says they're going to do something, they're going to do it, and we're grateful for that. And again, the employees of the city are grateful, and I thank everyone for their hard work in doing this. So, Mr. Matthews, I know you and your staff, if you've slept lately, that would be a good thing, I'm sure, but I know you've put a lot of hard work into it, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. I will echo Councilman Robinson's comments. This is a lot of work for our entire city staff, but particularly HR, so thank you for your work to make sure we are compensating people in a competitive way. This is a win for Phoenix residents, because we'll be able to hire even more top-notch individuals and, and finish, fill vacancies. It's also a work in progress, and so we'll continue to understand and, and study more, and whether it be our contract negotiations next year or other ways, continue to make sure that we achieve our goals. We do have several individuals, including representative of our employees, here to comment, so I will go to them. Now, we'll begin with Jason Henley.
Jason Henley, I'm the president of ASME 2384, represent about 1,400 Unit 2 members for the City of Phoenix. Phoenix City Council, thanks for having me, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I stand before you today to emphasize the critical significance of, in approving the new pay ordinance, and express my profound gratitude for the completion of the comprehensive compensation and classification study. As employees of this great city, we recognize the importance of fostering a motivated and dedicated workforce, and the decisions you make regarding employee compensation play a vital role in achieving this goal. First and foremost, I would like to extend my deepest appreciation for the effort and commitment that went into conducting the comp and class study. This thorough examination of our city's pay structure is a testament to your dedication to ensuring fairness and equality and equity among our valued employees. By investing time and resources into this study, you have demonstrated your commitment to providing a workplace that is both rewarding and fulfilling for the individuals who serve our community day in and day out. However, the true impact of this study will only be realized if we take the necessary steps to implement its findings. The proposed pay ordinance represents an opportunity to put into action the principles of fairness, recognition, and appreciation for the exceptional work carried out by our city employees. Approving this ordinance will not only enhance the morale and motivation of our workforce, but also enable us to attract, to retain and retain the best talent, ensuring the delivery of high-quality services to our residents. We must recognize that our city employees are the backbone of our community, diligently working to keep our city operating, maintaining our public safety. Recreational facilities provide essential public services and much more. Their unwavering commitment, uh-oh, their unwavering commitment deserves to be rewarded fairly, reflecting the crucial role they play in shaping the well-being and prosperity of our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now go to a virtual comment. We'll begin with PJ and then Luis.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
You're a little faint, but we can hear you.
Outstanding. Mayor Gallego, members of the council, my name is PJ Dean, and I'm the Secretary of the United Phoenix Firefighters Association. I speak today on behalf of our President Brian Willingham, who is currently in Tucson, presiding at our state convention. Serving in the Phoenix Fire Department is a great honor, but also no easy task. In the past decade, our call volumes have increased by almost 50%. 71% of our units are currently operating at crisis levels. Last year, our call volumes reached a record level. Those who work under the most demanding of circumstances, such as Phoenix firefighters, deserve to be paid at a rate that leads the comparative salary market. As the class and comp study indicates, our pay scales have become significantly outpaced by surrounding agencies. Left unchecked over time, this issue will undoubtedly compound itself and impact our ability to maintain an adequate workforce, a problem we simply cannot afford to have. As the many council members today have indicated, we are extremely grateful that city manager Barton and his team have taken the steps necessary to remedy this pay disparity. Our organization is in complete support of the pay ordinance and urges its approval. This comes with one notation, however, a concern for the amount of time it will take to arrive at what has been established as the top of the market. Of our three ranks, engineers, the members who shoulder the great responsibility of driving and operating our apparatus are the furthest behind at approximately 25% below market of comparative agencies. In the time it will take our engineers to progress through these pay steps, the goal scope, the goalpost that represents the top of the market will undoubtedly be much further down the field. Based upon the implementation of these pay scales, engineers in our other ranks will likely never actually be at the true top of the market in comparative pay. Our request is that a means in which to expedite the implementation of these pay scales be investigated. Doing this will ensure our firefighters and their families can more quickly obtain the top level of compensation they deserve. We are confident this can be achieved, and as always, we stand at the ready to be a good partner in engineering any solution that is fair and equitable to both employee and taxpayer. Thank you very much for your time today and the opportunity to speak before you. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Luis will be our final speaker.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity for coming on this topic, and I want to thank you all for the efforts and, and for the study, for to get a pay contribution for all city employees. One of the, the questions I have is already probably answered. There is a lot of inconsistencies in the pay scale, especially, you know, I work in the Environmental Service Division for Water Services, and I, I see some inconsistencies. Are those inconsistencies going to be addressed after the implementation of this proposal? And I think you mentioned the fall is going to be kind of like, between August and, and October is going to be a, a period where they can be addressed those, those gaps? That's my question.
Thank you. Thank you for that testimony. Do you want to answer the question?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I believe the question was in, in relation to the internal alignment. So that is, as I mentioned, we'll be circling back with department heads after implementation and identifying concerns within each department, and we'll be addressing those.
Wonderful, thank you. So we're doing a very important step today, but it is a step. It is not the end of the process. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any additional council member questions or comments? Councilwoman Hotte Washington.
I'll just wanted to echo all of my colleagues' comments. I won't belabor it, but I do, again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, thank you to Amber and her team. Thank you, David, for implementing all of this. I think an investment in our greatest asset is our employees, so I am proud to vote yes in favor of this pay ordinance.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hotte Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Please do.
I am going to be voting yes, but I did realize that I was horrible in not saying thank you to all the hard work that you all have done. So I look forward to fixing our areas as we go forward, but I do not want it to go unsaid that my office and my constituents are incredibly thankful for all of your hard work. Thank you, Mayor.
Pastor.
Let me think about, no. It's a solid yes. It's for, it's for, I think they've done a great job, and, yes, yes, yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes, yes, yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. That's a big woo-hoo.
Passes 9-0.
By unanimous vote, the city council has voted to have more competitive compensation. Item 66 is the Police Employment Marketing Services Contract. Our marketing contract over the decades has been sometimes the focus of some parody accounts, and a lot of different stakeholders have weighed on this and, and how the city can best effectively market and hire police officers while we are in a major hiring push. I do have some questions about this one. What geography will we be marketing to as we try to hire?
Mayor, members of the council, I can ask Chief Sullivan or his team, Chief Chapman, to come up and, and speak to this more directly. Our primary market is the Arizona market, and we will be marketing to the state of Arizona, but we will also be reaching past that. So I'll let Chief Chapman speak to that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. The primary focus where we see the most interest is from the southwest United States, specifically Arizona, Texas, California, State of Washington, Oregon, Nevada, and New Mexico. By analytics from what we see on our social media, those are the areas that we get our most hired applicants from, not necessarily interest. So we're putting our focus on where those applicants are coming from.
So it's 1.7 million over five years, so per year, it's not a particularly large marketing budget?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat?
How much are we spending per year?
Mayor, it's, it's 1.7 million over the five years, but it's not evenly divided, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number per year. It's a larger amount in the first year, and then it's approximately 200,000 per year ongoing for the other four years.
So five states with 200,000 or even half a million seems like too much to me. I mean, that you just can't message to that many people, you would not, people would not see it very often.
Mayor, members of council, I didn't write the contract, and we are grateful for the money that we do get in this, because we are a recruiting staff of four in the police department. We have just onboarded a senior PIO and some marketing folks that are going to be able to help with that. So anything that we're doing to augment this is going to exponentially create a larger footprint for us in the digital world as well as the natural marketing world.
I would prefer that we focus locally. I think we want people who know this community and are excited about it.
Mayor, members of council, that has been our immediate focus through the creation of a pipeline with our cadet program, which targets high school students throughout the Phoenix metro area. We're looking at 14- to 19-year-olds who can onboard in a volunteer capacity and then transition into full-time employment in a variety of areas within the police department. Detention officer, Communication Bureau, police assistant, records clerks, et cetera. Where, that is where we're spending, the focus of our time is building that pipeline. So in four or five years, we continue to reap the benefits of that pipeline that is currently in process, and we are currently maxed out at 50 cadets in that program, and we have been that way for the last two years.
Will we, and would this contract be focusing on laterals or new hires, or what will be the, would you, would you be your preference in how we divide?
Mayor, members of council, it is a broad-based approach where we can do the most outreach in, in the broadest span. I'd say with respect to our hiring challenges, we're several hundred spots down. There is a challenge associated with putting that many people through the academy in a short amount of time from a structure standpoint. So we are as focused on lateral officers from within the state and around the country, as well as our traditional recruit applicants that start and graduate from our six-month academy.
We had a previous chief who had reflected on some of the laterals we got from outside of the state and felt that they turned out to not be the best cultural fit, just because we have very specific Phoenix values? Is that something we, we still believe?
Mayor, members of council, I would just say by, by rough numbers, we hire somewhere between 5% and 8% of all lateral applicants that come into the organization. And I think by snapshot, over the last five or six years, we've had upwards of 500 of those lateral applicants. They do not make it through the process for a variety of reasons, from post-re requirements in other states to the background requirements of the state here in Arizona. So that, that number of, of getting through that system is small compared to the overall applicant pool.
And will you tell us about the two firms that are recommended for support?
Mayor, the two firms that are being recommended to. Mayor, the two firms that are being recommended today are On Advertising and Lincoln Strategy Group. Both scored very highly on the scoring criteria, pretty close together. One received 782 points and the other received 762 points.
And any, what are their expertises?
Mayor, Members of the Council, neither of us were on the scoring panel, so we would have to bring an additional person up here to speak to the group specifically, if you want us to do that.
That'd be great.
Chief, or David, do you want to speak to that? Okay. David Matthews, our HR director, is coming back up to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. So this procurement for this item was conducted in accordance with Administrative Regulation 3.10, where the panel evaluated based on method of approach, qualifications and experience, as well as pricing. And those two firms were the ones selected by the committee.
Can you talk about their background?
I do not have the background of the actual vendors with me right now.
Councilman Waring.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just echo a couple of Mayor's comments, but from a different angle, sort of on the Public Safety Committee, so we've talked about this issue a lot. We haven't had a lot of success with the laterals. I would have thought it would be great, you know, other cities having their issues with police, we got great weather, but you know, it sounds like, from what you've told us in the past, a lot of those officers maybe had issues with their current department, and that's why they were trying to move. And so I get that we're advertising in other cities, maybe to the younger people, but I just wonder what kind of return on that investment we're going to get. To the Mayor's point also, it's not that much money. We all spent more money than you're talking about to win our seats, and that was a few months of advertising to a pretty small, you know, population compared to like trying to advertise to the entire city of Dallas or something. You know, I know what billboards cost, I know what digital costs. I mean, yeah, you can get a lot of imprints and stuff, but you better have a lot of that to get somebody to move away from their family to come here. So I do agree with the Mayor about the focused effort here. I do think the biggest advertising we have is that the current officers, you know, basically promoting their work to the extent they feel that's appropriate, and frankly, us being supportive, because I just don't know that the dollars you're talking about are going to make a huge difference. So is there a way to maybe come back and discuss a bigger budget? And maybe, maybe something that's a little more focused where the return on investment isn't like 5% of the applicants? Because I just, those laterals, I would have thought that made sense before I knew a lot more about it and then realized that that hasn't been the ticket and never really has been for the department. They never even get to the stage of actually fitting in, because most of them never even get selected to work here in the first place. And we also, I hope, are spending money on retaining the officers, particularly the ones who are retirement-eligible. Some aren't even waiting that long to leave, which is really disparaging, but hopefully the ones that are retirement-eligible, we've tried to do the pay raise, so that should incentivize at least a couple of years, we thought, of people staying. But I'd almost rather focus on that at this point. But I don't know if you have any comments to what I just said. It kind of echoes somewhat the Mayor said, maybe from a little bit of a different perspective.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Waring, it is a tough situation to recruit. I would say with respect to retention, our retention numbers are much better year over year. You forgive me, I don't have those percentages right now, but we are not, we do not see the attrition this year that we've seen in the past two years specifically. And I can point that to, one, the market adjustment in pay, so thank you for all of that. And two, the extension of the drop program through PSPRS is encouraging people to stay beyond the five years where they would be normally capped out. Also, I would say with respect to recruiting and the academy, again, 20 to 21, 21 to 22, we're seeing year-over-year increases percentage of hiring and attracting people. I think we have a long way to go to perfecting that. There's certainly areas that we can focus on. I would like to focus as many as we can out of our backyard, but fact remains just very transitory with people moving in here on a regular basis. So we do, we want to cast the widest net and attract people from a wide variety of backgrounds. In addition to that, things specifically we're doing in the Police Department is we're taking hiring teams to places like Southern California, not just recruiters, but background investigators and polygraphers to initiate and finalize as much of that background process that we can, because it is kind of an audacious background. It's very intrusive, it can take several months. And so we're trying to shorten those steps necessary and be proactive and do things differently than we have done in the past where we've had everybody come here. So far, far from being perfect, but a lot better than we were a year ago, and I'll sit here a year from now and tell you we'll be a lot better than we are today.
Mayor, and I would just add, you know, it is better, so appreciate your efforts on that, but it's not nearly where it needs to be either to get us back where we'd like to be. One thing that we had done in the past is focus on the military. I don't, maybe it slid by me, but I don't recollect that being mentioned. That was a specific focus under a previous chief. I think they were actually going to military bases, and when people were leaving the military, they were basically met by Phoenix recruiters, I would think, given how many veterans we have on the force. I think that would certainly behoove us. And if we're going to go out of state, focusing on that out-of-state population might make a lot of sense. And I know digitally they can really, really narrow this down, so you can probably find those people online too and put the thought in their head like, hey, I was thinking about being a police officer, I got all this training, you know, might like to continue with this kind of work. I hadn't thought about Phoenix before. You know, that might be something, I'm sure you probably thought of that, but I don't think it got specifically mentioned, so it might be something to revisit.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Waring, we are a proud member of the Skilled Bridge Program through the Department of Defense, which allows transitioned military veterans to come out of that service six months out of their contract early and onboard with the City of Phoenix, not only for the Police Department, but in a variety of public works, heavy equipment operators, fire department. They're welcome to come for a variety of those. We are specifically working with those. The nice thing about that is Department of Defense does a lot of that marketing for us because that is a transition program. So we do get regular inquiries from people all over the country, and it's a matter of being able to complete their background and solidify that six months before the time goes. Again, we're five months into it, so we'll have a lot more data on that probably by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Waring. So I had tried to get a briefing on this, but our Assistant Chief, who oversaw the procurement, was traveling, and Chief Chapman did a very good job, but this, I think, maybe was not what we would have preferred to brief on. And then obviously, our HR people team has been very busy with the class and comp item that we just approved, so I would ask if we could continue this to the June 14 council meeting, which is our next council meeting. But I think some, Councilwoman O'Brien wanted to comment, I don't know if the continuance changes.
Well, my questions were in relation to when we recruit outside, and while I realize recruiting to other states, as it relates to laterals, you said results in about 5%. Do we have any data, and I realize you weren't expecting this maybe today, on how many new officers as opposed to laterals we got from out of state?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman O'Brien, is your question, what is our, what is our laterals compared to our new hires?
From out of state.
I'm sorry, I do not have that data off the top of my head, but I can find that for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I guess if we're going to continue that, we can have that conversation, if it's going to be continued, we'd have that conversation. I think what is important is that when I started as a council member approximately two years ago, we were, we were way upside down. Folks were leaving us far quicker than we could recruit them. We have corrected that, and while we haven't turned it all the way around, as Councilman Waring said, and recruited all the folks we need to to fill our hundreds and hundreds of positions, it is, it's a bunch of different actions that are going to get there, not just any one thing. And I applaud the department in realizing they couldn't continue to do things the same way. So thank you for that, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to Chief Chapman, I think you answered it already, but I may have missed it, and I was just going by my notes. Where, this, this contract will focus regionally, correct?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Robinson, it will focus on the southwest region, but I think traditionally what we have seen, we do marketing efforts in the Midwest and the East during times of extreme cold weather for obvious reasons. So I think there'll be, there'll be a lot of that as well. The focus, from my understanding of this contract, is this is primarily going to focus a large chunk of it on social media, social media and digital marketing, specific to the age group and the demographics that we're interested in hiring.
Which I think is the right approach, and I thank you for that. I was, I was more concerned that it wasn't more of a national approach, but I also realized that by the amount of money we are paying for the contract, it may not be able to do as much as we want to. But to your point with regard to this, being specific about the age groups, I know when I'm teaching my students, and usually it's anywhere between 300 and 400 ASU students a semester, they're on their devices. That's how they see things, that's how they find things, and then they ask me questions about various agencies based on what they're seeing online. What I would argue, or what I would suggest, a little bit more of a budget that would allow us to be more expansive, allowing us to be more diverse in our reach, you know, and I, and Mr. Matthews, I guess my question for you would be, are there metrics or can we put in place metrics for these two advertising agencies to hit certain, you know, benchmarks that we want them to hit, or certain groups we want them to reach out to? I'm just, if we're spending the money and we want to make an impact, and, you know, law enforcement and fire, and these are the backbone of our cities, I, you know, I want us to do as much as we possibly can to ensure that we're reaching all the possible candidates we can for these positions.
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Robinson, so these contracts do allow the city to, require the city to approve any communication before it goes out, so those targeted groups, we would approve what targeted groups the vendors would be going at for their advertising. So that is in the contracts, that we direct kind of what type of advertising and what population we're targeting, what the messages actually say. That is all within the city's control.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien.
I have a follow-up question to Councilmember Robinson's questions. How was, and I'm not sure whom, which of you to address this to, how was the amount determined for this contract?
I can answer that. Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman O'Brien, it was determined by a group of employees that were put together between PD, HR, and our Communications Office to determine what types of advertising we think we might utilize, and they put together a recommendation for how much of a budget should be requested for this contract. And while I recognize that in some realms, this feels like a little bit of money for advertising for the Police Department, it's actually a big improvement from what budget they had previous to this contract, if it's to be approved. And so this was, this was put together through the recommendation of our Communications Office staff, our HR staff, and our Police Department staff.
Thank you, Lori. And how many respondents were there to the RFP?
Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman O'Brien, there were four respondents deemed to meet all the requirements that responded. So there was four that were evaluated as part of this process.
The four were evaluated, and these were the top two based on the scoring and the rubric?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. And Councilmember Robinson, did you have an amount that you thought was appropriate for increasing, or you, I'm trying to understand a little bit more about your comp statements?
And what I, thank you for the question, Councilwoman O'Brien. What I was trying to figure out, I was going to ask some folks in that arena, what would 1.7, you know, $1,700,000 do for them? How far would that reach? Because as Councilman Waring said, you know, when we campaign and we're out there and doing these types of things, I'm signing off on those invoices, I know what they cost. I was just curious as to whether or not we're doing enough. Like I said, we know how important public safety is. If we're going to do it, let's do it the right way. Let's not just go at it half-heartedly and ensure that we get an organization or a company that can do what we want it to do. And that was my position, that was my point more than anything else.
Okay, I have one more question. Would we have the ability to increase the amount of this contract if it were passed today or at the next meeting?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman O'Brien, yes, we could come back with a request, provided, you know, we have the budgetary capacity to do that in the future. I think to Councilman Robinson's point, this will give us an opportunity to evaluate exactly what sort of return on investment we are getting from this, this level of contract, and we can look at those metrics, see what sort of applicants we're getting based on this advertising, and then reevaluate and come back to the council with some additional recommendations perhaps on how we should move forward. This is, again, you know, a big step up from, you know, the few billboards and other things that we did previously, so this will allow us to have a much bigger reach, especially through digital marketing, and that's really the focus of this contract. We're trying to get the biggest bang for our buck and be able to reach the audiences we want to reach, and as it's already been described, those audiences are on social media, they're in the digital realm. And so we want to capitalize on that, focus on those types of advertising opportunities, and then we can come back to the council, report on how that's doing, and then what we think we might benefit from going forward.
Beatrice Johnson is here to provide testimony. Ms. Johnson, the floor is yours.
I feel those funds could be better used to train your Phoenix police detectives, which include Detective Taryn Campbell, who had all my sister Dorothy Jean Dell Chambers next to kid info, but he refused to call to notify our family. That money can better be used to train your police officers that when a driver who was speeding, zigzagging in and out of traffic, killing two people with a .031 alcohol, and the first responder officer wrote he showed signs of impairment, you need to use those funds to train your officers to do a blood test, instead of letting a driver who kills two people drive off. You can use that money to train your city prosecutor Hillary to ask for a warrant for arrest when the driver failed to appear in court on February 7, 2023. The family had to ask the judge for a warrant. And last but not least, you can use that money to train your city prosecutor, city judge, that when a defendant has two counts of bodily harm with death and a first-degree failure to appear because he did not show up for his arraignment on February 7, 2023, was arrested on March 1st, saw no judge but was released, and city prosecutor, city judge agreed with his attorney to allow him to make a plea on the phone, violating again our family's victim right. It was not prearranged, he just did not show up. I oppose, as a Phoenix homeowner and taxpayer, I oppose you using that money. You could use it somewhere else, like training your officers, so no other families will experience what our family experienced.
Thank you. I move we continue item 66 to the June 14 Phoenix City Council meeting.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Councilwoman Pastore had comments, and I, but it's continued, so it's not done.
No, I just want to make a comment.
Now, go for it.
So I appreciate what you're trying to do, because we do need police officers. And understand, totally understand the cadet piece of wanting to recruit, but we don't have enough cadets in the pipeline of Franklin Police and Fire. So I understand, I understand the issue you're in and wanting to try to solve this problem and be able to get police officers. I just feel at right now, with the dialogue, we probably, well, we did, continue it so that then there's a deeper dive on what does this really look like, and if we have to add additional dollars. My one question was, did this go to the PSJ committee?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Pastore, we talk about hiring and recruiting at PSJ every month, and so this has been at PSJ every month, and so this has been part of the overall conversation. The contract itself didn't go as an individual item, but we have been talking about strategies for police recruiting on a regular basis.
I just wasn't sure if this dialogue happened in committee, that's why. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe, is it, item 70 is next? All right. We have a motion on item 70.
Move to approve item 70.
Second.
Leonard Clark is here to testify.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I support this item. I want to thank the Biden administration for getting us the money necessary to help this funding go to the firemen, and also I believe this Office of Homeless Solutions is going to get $1,963,927. I guess primarily it's going to focus on making sure our homeless brothers and sisters are not having their property destroyed. But no offense, I would like to hear from them to see how well this is going. As I drove here today, I did notice they were moving people out. But again, while with government, things can sound rosy and pretty, we do need to talk to people who are actually involved in, you know, government legislation. But I support this, and once again, I want to thank President Biden, and, you know, the people in Congress, mainly Democrats, who at least tried to get some money to help out people despite, you know, what other things that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate our federal partners who are working with us to provide, or to try to provide, funding to the city of Phoenix. Any comments on item 70? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 73 is authorize revisions to Phoenix City Code Chapter 32 related to stormwater. Will the clerk read the title?
Item 73 is for ordinance G 7116, and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code Chapter 32A pertaining to grading and drainage, Chapter 32B pertaining to flood plains, and Chapter 32C pertaining to stormwater quality protection.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 73.
Second.
Second.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 87 is the annual review and updates to the Neighborhood Services Department Code Enforcement Policy. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 87.
Second.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Um, hoping that we could have a friendly amendment to motion 87 to include the following addition to Section 1.6 titled Exceptions. Violations include but are not limited to non-permitted events where the owner has been notified but activity continues, such as unauthorized parties that occur on commercial properties, events with outdoor entertainment without the appropriate use permit, and mobile vending on properties with complaints from the community. I wanted just to have this additional language in our code so that, so people, our constituents reading it, could have some idea of what would fall under that area. This would not be exclusive to the list, but just kind of an idea for folks to understand.
I'm fine with that.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Councilwoman O'Brien, but could you give us the page number and read that one more time?
Yes, ma'am. Just give me one second. It is Section 1, and then at 6, which is on page, I believe, 427, or 427 of the entire book, or page 4 of the Code Enforcement Policy. Episodic violations was added with that, then A, and then we would include what violations include but are not limited to.
Okay.
So that there are some examples for people to better understand. I read that paragraph, and I just thought, what, I don't know what falls under that. So that's why I asked NSD and Spencer to provide some ideas of what that would be.
Thank you, and staff is, this?
NSD here?
Okay. The leader of the Neighborhood Services Department has given the thumbs up, the famous policymaking tool. All right.
And I do appreciate all the work that was done on this. I just, I think anytime we can help out our constituents to better understand something by examples.
Oh, yes, you're right on this one.
Thank you.
All right.
Definitely second.
Any council member comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
No, it's Guardado.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Guardado, whoops.
Yeah, can we just have staff explain just a little bit more what this amendment means? Just because I haven't seen it, not saying I'm not in support of it, but if someone could just explain that a little bit more, what that, what that actually means?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Guardado, the substance of the update to the Code Enforcement Policy allows us to address some of these not regularly occurring issues. So, you know, some of the items that we see with short-term rentals, or spaces that are being used for events that are not properly permitted to do so. So the Councilwoman's amendment would give some examples of where this could play out.
And what kind of, what's the accountability to that, or what would, I mean, I know that this is something that we've been wanting to do for a little bit. So what does that actually mean? What is the accountability, or what's the retaliation towards this, once we implement this?
Councilwoman, so this would keep within our, the intent of our policy, which is to lead with education, but then follow up with enforcement when necessary. So what this allows us to do is when we have issues, like, let's say, noise complaints from a restaurant that is using outdoor space for events, when they don't have that permit to do so, when we get complaints, we can have that initial conversation with the business owner or the business. And then if they continue to have that violation, when we do observe the violation, we'll be able to move straight to citation. So it allows us a little more accountability when it comes to residents from the community who are regularly complaining, but it is very difficult for us to kind of catch the abuse in the act or the violation.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Okay. So episodic violations, please spell that out to me. What's the definition of episodic violations? Because if I read it correctly, it says including violations at short-term rentals. And if I understand, which I don't know all the nuances of short-term rentals, is that when there are items that happen at short-term rentals that then police are called, because this is what my short-term rental group, neighborhood group, and says, this is continuing, continuing, and NSD isn't doing anything. And then I find out, well, why can't you do something? And then I hear, these are the reasons why. Is this what we're trying to close the gap on?
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely. So when we initially went to subcommittee in March and presented on our initial draft of recommended changes to our Code Enforcement Policy, we also committed to going out to the community and listening to feedback about what the community thought about our recommended changes. At the time, we weren't intending to address anything related to short-term rentals, because we know that there will be additional ordinance changes that will be coming soon, based on some of the state law changes. But as we heard from the community, we heard that there are a lot of frustrations, which certainly is nothing new. But we, we really sought to make some changes to our policy that would allow us to be more responsive, better responsive to address these issues. So yes, we added this in the episodic violation definition, because right now, our process is very administratively burdensome, and it adds a lot of bureaucracy and steps that prevent us from being able to go quickly to hold folks accountable when they are abusing short-term rentals. So absolutely, this is intended to help us reduce those steps. Lead with education, of course, but hold folks accountable more quickly.
So then, okay, so I understand that. But will this also help with those areas that are permitted with, say they get a permit to host music outside, and then it's beyond what that special permit is allocated for, and then they're, I think I've been dealing with this for two years, year and a half, of constituents documenting, getting a noise machine, doing everything that they are doing, and then I'm told we can't do anything?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, yes, I believe I know the specific situation that you're referring to, and yes, that one part of the reason that it took so long for us to get into court, and we did win our case, we did issue the citations, and we were successful. But it did take longer than what we had hoped because of the additional steps that were in our previous Code Enforcement Policy. So this exception allows us to address those far more timely.
Okay. So can I ask what those, I think those steps need to be placed in here so that we're clear. And what I mean by that is, as a council body, when we're dealing with these issues, it's nice to have this Code Enforcement Policy, but I also want to know first step, second step, third step, and then when is it going to be enforced? So I would like to see that, only because many of us are probably dealing with the same thing, but at different levels, and very frustrated at the fact that then we can't do anything, or there's no enforcement. So I don't know if we add it to it, or if there's a, just appendix when you come back and say, this is what happens in these situations. Thank you.
And Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, if you look at page 425 of the packet, 426 and 427, the Code Enforcement Policy outlines the standard Code Enforcement process, which includes inspection, and pre-notification, immediate inspection when warranted, pre-notification letter, the formal notice of ordinance violation, civil citation, criminal complaints, and exceptions. And so what we're talking about here is, those are the typical standard Code Enforcement steps. This item, item 6, which is added, is episodic violations to allow us an exception to move more expediently through the process. And Councilwoman O'Brien's motion helps explain what types of situations may address, may be included within those exceptions.
We ready for a roll call?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you. Can you explain a little bit, because I'm reading the language right now, Spencer, are we, is this, are we including food trucks in this?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guardado, so yes, potentially if we have a vacant lot owner, let's say, and they are allowing a mobile, a food truck to vend from that site in violation of our mobile vending ordinance, that absolutely is something where if we've discussed with the owner, we've let them know that we've received complaints from the community, and they continue to have these events, maybe not consistently, this isn't intended for the situations where, let's say, there's a food truck every day, or every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, where it's regular enough that we can go through our typical Code Enforcement process. But if we have the events, the periodic episodic issues, we can better address those based on those complaints and an abridged process.
I mean, I just think this is a little bit difficult for me. I know that all different neighborhoods are different. You know, I know that in Maryvale, one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is the fact that we don't have enough restaurants for families to be able to go out and eat. We talk about the long lines that we have in a lot of our, in a lot of our, in a lot of our restaurants. I know that we have a lot of food trucks. I know that there's a lot of areas where if we didn't have the food trucks, we would have a lot of other issues happening in a lot, in a lot of these places. I'm having a really hard time with this, because I think that we are definitely going after the micro businesses in our neighborhoods. You know, we saw this issue during the pandemic when we were trying to help people and give people some aid for their small businesses. I would, you know, I would like for us to either, I would like to make a motion, a secondary motion, to either continue this, to talk about how we implement this, or we go back to the original motion, just because I'm having a really hard time with this, because we, you know, we had passed something in CCI that I thought would definitely help, would be very helpful, and I was very in support of that. But with some of these additions, I understand short-term rentals, I agree with that. So if we can either remove the food, you know, the food vendors that we're adding on to this, and talk about that at a later time, and just continue with the short-term rentals, I can be okay with that. Or if I would, or I can propose doing a secondary motion to continue to talk about this, because this, from what I'm hearing and what you're saying, Spencer, like, we're going after our moms and pops places that at least in Maryvale are very helpful, given the lack of restaurants that we have.
Maker of the motion. And I guess it would be a substitute motion, is that what we would need, Julie?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So I think we have an initial motion on the table. We had a friendly amendment, so we've had one motion, so.
Okay. And so, and Councilwoman Guardado, I think we would want a date to which you are continuing it. But first, let's hear from, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Pastor made the motion? Councilwoman Ansari made the motion? Okay. So I think that would then be a question to you. Do you want to keep your motion as amended, in which case, Councilwoman O'Brien?
Could, could we just redo, oops, sorry, didn't mean to hit my microphone. I would be happy to have it end with, end events with outdoor entertainment without the appropriate use permit, and get rid of the mobile vending on properties with complaints from the community as an example. These are merely examples. I'm happy to remove the mobile vending on properties with complaints from community as an example.
Councilwoman Ansari.
That will help Councilwoman Guardado.
Councilwoman Guardado, would that address your concern?
That would be great, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Ansari, or Vice Mayor Ansari is comfortable with that. And Councilwoman Pastor, are you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Are you talking about food trucks? Because I think there needs to be clarity on what you're speaking about, or what this example's about.
Mayor and Councilwoman.
Why would, I guess, I understand that these are examples of episodic violations, but these are violations, period. So why do they, why are we putting them in another category? Is it to move the process faster, or can we just say, change this process to move, change the timeline of the process to move faster?
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, yes, when we're talking about mobile vending, that is a, food trucks on private property are considered mobile vending violations if they don't have the correct license for that location as per city code. So that's, that's an existing city code, you're absolutely correct. When we talk about this section and the exceptions to our standard Code Enforcement process, yes, it's about moving the cases along quicker. And mostly, that has to do with notifications. So we want to make sure that we're giving folks plenty of time to come into compliance. And so we have our processes, such as the pre-notification process, which is a letter that is sent out when we first get a reported violation for an offender who is not a recidivist. So we haven't had a case within the last 12 to 24 months, depending on this policy. After that, our staff go out within 10 days, and we do an inspection. After that, our staff go out within 10 days and we do an inspection. At that point, if the violation still exists, we'll send a notice of ordinance violation. And then we'll give them a certain amount of time, additional amount of time to come into compliance. At that point, if we go out and we identify the issue, we'll move on to the next step, a civil citation, unless there's additional conversation for, you know, to allow them additional timing based on the particular circumstances. What this exception allows us to do is not go through those same processes. So what we would intend to do, and I think short-term rentals is a great example, before we ever go out, before we ever have a complaint, we can send everyone who's registered as a short-term rental with the city a notice, letting them know what types of common violations we see with short-term rentals. So that would serve as our first notice. Then when we receive a complaint from the community, we could send them a second notice before we verify a violation, just putting them on notice that we've, we've explained to them the potential violations, and now we've received a complaint on their property. And that way, by the time we're able to actually catch them in the act violating the city code, we would be able to move straight to citation. So it's because of the episodic nature of these events, it's different than, let's say, a broken fence or weeds where they're there until they're gone. Episodic issues occur infrequently. And so it's difficult to use our standard code enforcement process related to those types of violations, and that's what this exception would allow us to do.
Okay. I guess my question is if they're violating, they're violating, period. And so there needs to be some type of enforcement. So are you saying it's taking too long? Because then let's change the timelines of all this. Because I think it takes too long already in the 15 days and all this other stuff. So I'd rather change that and move things faster. Because what I get from NSD is, we can't do it because of this, we're bound by this, we cannot move faster because it's, we need another 10 or 15 days, we don't have enough staff, staff doesn't want to necessarily enforce. So I'm having problems, I guess, now with all of it. And in particular, because there are some dynamics in District Four that are completely out of violation and there's a public health issue going on. And so I don't know, and it has to deal with food. So I'm not sure how to handle this now.
I lean towards continue it to the 14th.
Thank you.
Okay, so Councilwoman Guardado is, I don't think had a date. Would you be comfortable continuing this to June 14th?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a substitute motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Next, go to 93. Good news in District Seven, Councilwoman Ansari.
Move to approve item 93.
Second. Councilwoman Ansari.
First of all, I want to thank Chris Mackey and her team for all of the hard work that they have put in to deliver on the promise of the Loop 202 South Mountain Tech Corridor. We're approving two industrial tech parks in District Seven today with the goal of bringing high-wage tech jobs and advanced manufacturing jobs to Levine. Yesterday, my office joined Councilwoman Hodge Washington on a driving tour of Levine to discuss new developments and share our visions for the area. This was the second of a similar bus tour that we did several months ago to bring local restaurateurs to Levine to make the pitch for what a great area this is. But more importantly, with growth, we will also need to deliver unneeded infrastructure to ensure that Levine can grow responsibly. So whether that's street improvements to water and wastewater lines, this item does just that. IDM's lead on this project is Jeff Gordon, and I just want to give them a shout out because they have been fantastic partners, and they have gotten significant buy-in with the Levine community, and it's truly exciting to see these projects come to life. So I'm excited to vote yes today.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I just want to quickly echo, repeat what Vice Mayor has said. Thank you again to the, our city staff, Chris Mackey, for leading those efforts. And I also wanted to say a special thank you to IDM companies. They are proven to be a valuable partner in our community. One of the things that they are invested in is our parks. We do have the only in 59th Avenue Park that they have made a commitment to invest in that park, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for your hard work. For this to move forward, it needs to create high-wage jobs, and we're really excited, or I'm very excited to see such exciting forward motion in the South Mountain Technology Corridor. This property owner has worked with us to try to recruit really high-wage jobs, and it's very exciting to see this move forward. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes, and congratulations.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next move to item 98, resolution to participate in and support the bid to host WNBA and NBA All-Star Games and related events.
Move to approve item 98.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I am really excited to support this item. We have become known as Championship Valley because we have the know-how and ability to execute the best major marquee sporting and mega events, and we have really put our communities on the spotlight, including most recently with Super Bowl. We are already preparing for the NBA Men's Final Four in April 24 and the Women's Final Four in 2026. We're seeing a lot of investment in downtown, and we're learning how to more strategically leverage these events, including for economic development and to support our small businesses and highlight those great successes. We've even found ways to highlight our historical, historic preservation efforts, as well as our wonderful food and bar scene. This will be an exciting opportunity to partner with our beloved Suns and Mercury as well to work to recruit these events. It's particularly exciting to me that we're pursuing the WNBA All-Star Game as we have just welcomed Brittany Griner back to our community, and I think, right now, it feels like the whole country is rooting for Brittany Griner. It's been a unifying moment from my perspective, so excited to support that. Councilman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm adamantly opposed to building stadiums and think that's a big mistake. But once you go down that crazy path, which this council did a few years ago, you have to maximize the use of the facility. So I just, for anybody who thinks it might seem strange that I'm supportive of stuff like this, now that it's there, we have to use it. It would be like building a $2 million house that you can't really afford, and then saying, oh, but I'm not going to buy the air conditioner that goes with it, and we're only going to get to use the house a couple of months a year. That would be stupid. So I definitely think we should bid on every one of these that we can get because the cost of doing that is de minimis compared to what the stadium cost, which I think in this case was $230 million. Your thank you notes from Robert Sarver in the mail for anybody who voted for that. So, you know, I definitely hope that we are successful in this because we need to be to get some of this money back. So, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Brien.
I do think you just gave Chris Mackey the next terminology for her shirt, Championship Valley. So I think that's an excellent idea, and I'm also happy to support this. Since we have the investment, we absolutely should be taking full advantage of this wonderful asset, as well as promoting our teams and our city whenever we can.
Wonderful. And to give credit where it's due, I believe the team at Visit Phoenix, Ron Price's team, First Coin Championship Valley, so it's not, not a Kate Gallego original, but I like it and appreciate the folks at Visit Phoenix recognizing an area of excellence. And I should say, we're not just pursuing sporting events, so we worked with Visit Phoenix and GPEC to bring Semi-Con West, so the big semiconductor meeting, and we've pursued other mega events, including Summit of the Americas. So we want to show off the Valley to a wide variety of audiences as well. One of our great partners from downtown Phoenix is here, and so we will welcome Devany Marley to speak about this item.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. My name is Devany Marley, President and CEO of Downtown Phoenix, Inc., and I am here today to enthusiastically support the proposed resolution for the city to participate in and support the bid to host WNBA and NBA All-Star Games and related events. Having worked for the Phoenix Suns and Mercury for nine years, before working for the 2015 Super Bowl and 2016 College Football Playoff, national championship host committees, and overseeing their downtown fan activities, I can confidently say there is just no louder megaphone and no larger billboard for a city than hosting mega events like WNBA and NBA All-Star Weekends. I joined Downtown Phoenix, Inc. in 2016 and have watched firsthand over the years the businesses that have located or expanded into downtown as a result of experiencing Phoenix during previous mega events, and we continue to see positive impacts from the local, the national, and the international media and visitors who also descended on downtown for the related activities. The Phoenix Suns have been very inclusive of Downtown Phoenix, Inc. and Visit Phoenix as they think about ways to engage and include the downtown community in their bid efforts. Knowing community impact is a pillar under the new ownership, hosting WNBA and NBA All-Star Weekends in downtown will be economic boosters for the local street-level businesses, which are still recovering from the pandemic, and the community as a whole. The City of Phoenix's collaborative approach to executing major events is well-known amongst national event producers, and it truly has become a competitive advantage for landing mega events in the region. We will keep our fingers crossed at Downtown Phoenix, Inc. for positive news very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Super yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
116 is our annual operations funding agreement with Valley Metro. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item, sorry, I lost.
116.
116. Second.
Come on, Waring.
Roll call.
Guardado. I apologize. Guardado.
Yes.
Thank you. Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Come on, Waring.
What was I saying about crazy pass before?
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item 125, amend city code to establish the shared micro mobility program. Will the clerk read the title?
Item 125 is ordinance G 7113, and ordinance amending sections 4-1, 23-1, 23-120, 23-128, 24-43, 24-51, 31-80, 31-85, 31-86, 31, 36-1, 36-29, 36-40.1, 36 dot, 36-40.2, 36-300, 36-301, 36-302, 36-303, 36-304, 36-305, 36-306, 36-307, 36-308, 36-309, 36-310, 36-312, 36-313, 36-403, 36-500, 36-501, 36-502, 36-503, 36-504, 36-505, 36-506, 36-507, 36-508, 36-509, 36-510, 36-512, and 39-7 of the Phoenix City Code to establish a shared micro mobility program and to enact related regulations.
I feel like we should applaud you for that. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 125.
Second.
Patrick McDaniel is here to provide testimony.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Ansari and members of council. My name is Patrick McDaniel. I'm the Director of Advocacy for Phoenix Community Alliance. I'm here today on behalf of our Multimodal Connectivity Committee. We initially helped support the adoption of the micro mobility program. Today, I am here to support and to applaud the city council for efforts made to increase mobility for all of our residents throughout the city through various means. Numerous economic studies have shown that micro mobility programs often tend to help food and restaurant, food and beverage institutions, which are still coming out of COVID. But I'm here today to also make one request to members of council. There are currently two providers for the program, Spin and Lime, by the RFP that established the micro mobility program. There should be roughly 600 bikes or e-bikes placed throughout the city, deployed throughout the city. As of yesterday, per a conversation with the Streets and Transportation Department, there's roughly, the bikes or e-bikes should make up roughly 20% of the assets that are deployed. As of yesterday, there are roughly 5% of the assets that are deployed. We are several months into the program. It seems time, it seems that the providers are trying to make it difficult to deploy these bikes, trying to make it complicated for individuals to obtain these bikes through a reservation system, through a library system. That seems to be an unfair encumbrance placed upon the end users, and we, and our committee respectfully asks that steps be taken to ensure that these assets are provided, as were laid out originally in the program. Speaking on behalf of Phoenix Committee Alliance, one of the requests we receive the most from downtown convention visitors is, where can we get a bike? Where can we get on, just hop on a pedal bike to enjoy your city? So I think deploying these assets in a manner that was initially spelled out in the program through the RFP would be beneficial to all that are involved trying to use these throughout the city. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for that testimony. Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
I'd like to make a comment. The EDE Subcommittee has spoken about this. This is also going to do the transportation, I can't, TII, I think, to have this. You have two subcommittees speaking about this and wanting to get the bikes out the way the contract is written, and so I am requesting or making a directive of, we need to get these out, and if you're having issues getting them out, then come talk to us. But two committees are speaking about micro mobility and these bikes, so I'm a yes, though.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari. Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
126 is related to the Vision Zero Community Advisory Committee. Will the clerk read the title?
Item 126 is for ordinance G 7114, and ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article 42, Phoenix City Code relating to Vision Zero Community Advisory Committee.
Do we have a motion?
Second, yeah. Move to approve item 26, 126.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
127 is related to speed limits. Will the clerk read the title?
Item 127 is ordinance G 7115, and ordinance amending Chapter 36, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 12, Section 36-158, Schedule One of the Phoenix City Code relating to local speed limits in 25, at 25 locations.
Move to approve item 127.
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Guardado.
Yes.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item 135 is related to a new fire station. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention the fact, last Friday, I believe, my office and I had an opportunity to spend some time out in Owatuki for our first getting out in the community event, and we probably had close to 50 folks who stopped by, and I would say there was a good, a large percentage of them all commented on how happy they were that the fire station is coming out to East Chandler Boulevard. It was something that they're looking forward to, it's something they're well aware of, it's something that is welcomed, and, you know, I moved to, moved to approve item number 135.
Second.
Motion and a second. I look forward to supporting this as well.
is a great blessing. We know that it is, it can be very well be followed by many dry winters and lackluster monsoon, monsoon seasons. We need to use wet seasons like the one that we had this year to save more rather than thinking it gives us an opportunity to use more. This agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation gives us a fantastic opportunity to not only reduce our Colorado River water usage, but also to invest the up to $60 million in compensation provided in diversifying our water portfolio and providing more conservation tools for our residents and industries. I will definitely be supporting this agreement today. Thank you.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't be more thrilled that the states were able to come to agreement and that as Vice Mayor Ansari stated, that Phoenix is leading the way in these conservation efforts. I had the chance to meet with Bureau of Reclamation earlier this month to talk about the steps that Phoenix is taking and how important it is for us to decrease our dependency and advocate for additional dollars so that we can help with things like raising the dam at Bartlett Lake and our advanced water purification system. So again, thrilled to be voting yes for this and look forward to Phoenix being a leader in our conservation steps.
Thank you. Thank you both for your work on our water supply. So with this item, we will make available up to 150,000 acre feet of Phoenix's Colorado River entitlement to stay on the river and help us with the drought situation. We join communities such as Tucson, as well as the Gila River Indian Community in being part of the solution. I'm hopeful that this will be part of a bridge agreement to get us to another major agreement on the Colorado River. We do it at the same time, as Councilwoman O'Brien mentioned, that we're making a variety of other investments, including this council unanimously voting to move forward on an advanced water recycling facility that will help us shore up our water supply. Sometime soon, the state of Arizona will release the Phoenix Active Management Area Plan. The city of Phoenix has a very solid plan that does not rely on groundwater. Even though the plan is named after Phoenix, it includes a region that is much broader than Phoenix and different communities have very different water supplies. But the city of Phoenix has been working very hard to make sure that we have a robust water portfolio, including the Salt River Project System, as well as the Colorado River, and very little use of groundwater. So we are in a good position in that area. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Wardado.
Yes.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Castor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item 174 is the biennial certified audit of land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and development fees. We will begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, ma- item 174 is a request to hold a public hearing regarding the biennial certified audit of land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plan, and development impact fees as required by state statute. ARS 943-05 requires a biennial certified audit of municipalities' land use assumptions, infrastructure improvement plans, and development fees to be conducted by a qualified professional. The rule further specifies that the city, the city shall conduct a public hearing on the audit findings within 60 days of posting the audit's report on the city's website. Weldon Financial Services was retained to perform the biennial audit. The audit reviewed development impact fees and water resource acquisition fees for the period of July 1, 2020 through July 30, 2022. Mayor, there is no motion necessary. The audit was completed and made available to the public prior to this public hearing to comply with state law. Adam Miller, our Deputy Director over Growth and Infrastructure, is available to answer any questions or go through a short presentation. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. We do have one member of the public here to comment, so I will come to council members after we hear from the public and we will open the public hearing. Laurel, the floor is yours. Oh, okay. Perfect. For those of you who are watching online, Laurel explained that she is here for 175 and does not wish to testify on the audit. All right. Close that public hearing. Councilmember, does anyone wish to hear?
Mayor? Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just want to thank staff. The fact that we can hold a public hearing and we don't have any negative comments tells me that we're doing an excellent job with our impact fees. And as we know, impact fees are important. That's how we're paying for the fire station down in Alwachuki. So big kudos to our staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And while Adam is here, Adam played an important role in our effort to challenge the census for the city of Phoenix, and we are now the largest city in the country to have successfully challenged our census effort, bringing millions of dollars each year into our community. So thank you and the entire team for the work on that. I do not see any council members wishing to ask questions or comments. We do not need to vote on this item, so thank you, Adam. We will go to items 175 and 176, which are related items in District One at the north corner, north of the northwest corner of 17th Avenue and Happy Valley Road. We will have a brief staff report. We will open a public hearing. Each side will have up to 10 minutes. The applicant can reserve up to two minutes at the end to respond to questions raised by the appellant's side. And we will take up to two minutes of testimony from each member of the public registered. We'll turn to, this is in Council District One. Councilwoman, do you wish to make any comments to introduce the item?
I'm happy to hear from staff at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, then we will open, start 175 and 176 with the brief staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, item 175 is GPA-DV-3-22, request to amend the general plan to residential 15-plus. Item 176 is Z59-22, request to rezone the site from S1 to PUD to allow for multifamily residential. The DuValley Village Planning Committee was scheduled to hear this case on April 20, but did not make a recommendation due to no quorum. The planning commission heard this, heard both requests on May 4, 2023, and recommended approval per the staff recommendations on both requests. The planning commission recommendation was appealed, and a petition for a three-quarter vote was submitted on May 11, 2023. A three-quarter vote is required. Staff recommends approval of item 175 per the planning commission recommendation and adoption of the related resolution. Staff recommends approval of item 176 per the planning commission recommendation and adoption of the related ordinance. Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do not see any questions, so we will begin the public comment with the applicant, who has up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Ben Graff with the Law Firm of Corals and Brady. Thank you very much. Mayor, representing Shelter Asset Management, our client, who's the applicant in the proposed rezoning case. While staff pulls up our presentation, I just want to start by just outlining the collaboration with Councilmember O'Brien's office, with planning staff, and with the community that took place on this case. There was a lot that went into this, a true effort on all sides. And in fact, looking back at my calendar, we first started meeting with Councilmember O'Brien's office a bit over a year ago, and really just want to thank the team, thank planning staff for everything that we've done to go back and forth on this, to really ensure that we have the best possible development. And we have what, as you will see, as I'm explaining today, an opportunity for true attainable housing. And I, and I want to be respectful of, of the time clock, and I will reserve a couple of minutes, Mayor, so thank you for pointing that out. Shelter Asset Management is a company that has already made a big splash in Arizona, investing in District One and in multiple unit renovations across the valley. This will be the second development to break ground in Arizona. They are a long-term owner and manager, and that is the key to why they come in just under market in more of an attainable fashion with rental rates. And I'm happy to answer other questions on that if needed. As we look at the major question before the council today, it's really to address what's happening with this slide, both from employment needs and the lack of housing. This case is specifically designed to respond to Phoenix's housing plan and the need to meet what is now estimated at 118,000 missing units. We also, if you can see the star on the map, are conveniently located near TSMC, USAA, the airport, and Mayo Clinic. We are an ideal location for nearby proximity for attainable rental housing for our growing employers in Phoenix. So again, we started to discuss this site just here at 17th Avenue and Happy Valley Road just over a year ago, and the ability to place a quality multifamily development and quickly worked with staff to identify that a planned unit development or PUD would be the most efficient rezoning category. This allowed us, within what you can see as the edge of the border of the city of Phoenix and next to a county island, to specifically curtail our development standards to respond to the neighborhood and to respond to the needs. This is not a cookie cutter development that you would get from an R4 or an R5. We have specifically tailored our development standards to create the best possible development. You'll see that we are tucked in next to what the city council already approved for the Toll Brothers PUD and the county approved for the bungalows. So this is certainly an area where you're seeing higher density, multifamily growth, and the synergy with the commercial center to our south is key. We have an empty pad that is looking towards being redeveloped because of this multifamily development. We have our main access through the commercial development down to Happy Valley Road and secondary access on 17th Avenue. And we really, in a sense, complete the puzzle here of providing the most efficient housing without honestly stuffing this site to too many units. One of the examples is that the Toll Brothers site to our left is a slight more intense development. We've got 35 dwelling units per acre. As you come over to us, we are at 226 units at 28 units per acre. So if we were to have copied the Toll Brothers model, we would have had 280 units on our site, but instead we're coming down to 226. We're lowering the intensity as we get closer to the county island. The zoning, as you can see, will be compatible to another PUD next to the PUD for multifamily. And as we stated, two items tonight, one will require us to do a minor general plan amendment to the 15-plus dwelling units per acre. That will take the general plan from this exhibit to the exhibit here, which again will be consistent with everything to our west. This is probably the most important slide. I'll spend most of the majority of my time left on, on this slide. Before we even hit the site planning, we read every single opposition and support email that was associated with the bungalows and the Toll Brothers. We learned from those two examples that came through the city processes and county processes and tried to make the best possible plan. When we started to have neighborhood meetings, the neighbors directly to our north, their named Kim and Wayne Hudgens, they reached out and said, can we meet? Can we talk about how making your site plan better, more compatible with our site could work? Because of that, what you now have is instead of a 280-unit multifamily development, again, if we had really packed it in as much as possible, the 226 units now represent the fact that we only have a two-story townhome development along our northern border. We guaranteed that to the Hudgens and to the neighbor to the north. We also guaranteed that within 100 feet of the northern property line, we would not have any building taller than 30 feet or two stories. We've essentially created a buffer on the north-hand side specifically tailored to the requests we received from those neighbors very early in the process. In fact, those discussions date back to October of 2022, and then moved through, as we started working with planning staff, on how to incorporate, again, within the PUD, these very tailored methods. Another unique aspect of our site is the five-story building on the southwest corner. Now, the reason that we have found this and that staff has recommended approval to be appropriate is because we reduced density so incredibly on the northern portion of our site, that in order to still pencil this out at an attainable level for rental rates, it was essential that we do have more units toward the south. So our five-story building, as you can see, is uniquely situated next to a self-storage unit and behind the learning center, which is the daycare area. It is in fact 215 feet away from 17th Avenue and over 475 feet away from the closest single-family home. So while we have the five-story building, only one, and then we basically break down to four stories, two stories, we have a three-story step-down, it was important for us to basically buffer that height appropriately within this area. The other thing that was incredibly important with this site, that we received direct feedback from the city, was the fact that we originally only had our major access through the commercial center to the south, to Happy Valley, and we only had emergency access on 17th Avenue. In working with the city and realizing the needs of the learning center and some of our commercial users, it was essential to create two forums or points of ingress and egress. This made it so that our entire congestion, if you will, of traffic didn't occur in the commercial center down to Happy Valley Road, but instead was shared between 17th Avenue and Happy Valley Road. And you will see today, but we have an incredible amount of support from our commercial partners, our commercial neighbors to the south, because of the synergy that is about to take place. Mayor, I'll stop there for now and reserve the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Allison has up to 10 minutes, and Allison, you may use all 10 minutes or welcome other speakers. If you choose to speak for the whole 10 minutes, then it's all yours. So the floor is... I am afraid I could not hear what you were saying, but I think it was who was speaking. So whoever that is, come up.
[inaudible]
Perfect. Okay, thank you. We will welcome you for the 10 minutes, and if you could begin by letting at least me know your name.
Well, Mayor and members of council, my name is Gordon Lauks, and I've been living in the area in question for, well, since 1988 or something like that. I want to start out by saying that I couldn't agree more with what the applicant has stated. He stated that this is necessary housing. Great pressures are and should be on the city to make more housing just like this. He didn't address as deeply as I would be comfortable with in describing whether or not this is the site for said high density. Difficulty in your job can't be overstated. I appreciate your attention in this matter during the entire, as it turns out, eight minutes, because I will reserve also. Do I have a...
You want a PowerPoint advance?
Yeah.
All right.
Could they bring up the PowerPoint, please? There it is. Okay. I know this. This is labeled "issues that are driven by new facts." I'm going to go very quickly through this quick, this list here. We have new data to show that with quite certainty that the Happy Valley rural neighborhood is not in support of this, as was prior told to the public. Rezoning for high-density immediately adjacent to a neighborhood that is very rural conflicts, in fact, with the PDD general plan. The area in question puts the highest of density, five-story buildings, right across the street from the highest rural you can possibly get, where you've got lots that don't even go below one and one-quarter acre, typically two and a half or five-acre lots. Ingress and egress issues, which are on the top of the slide, are touching many of the areas, so I'm going to seem like I'm spending a lot of time on ingress egress, but I will show the connectivity of all of that. What you can see here is the development as shown in the lower part of that. The developer's traffic plan in this entire area did not include any of the rural area, which is to say, the unpaved and, the unpaved and undedicated roads in that area. Home at Happy Valley traffic will be able to make a simple left turn out of the, the ingress egress that he showed on the east side of the property, a simple left turn, and they will very quickly be on a dirt road. And that dirt road can lead only a couple ways, can lead out of the area. But I don't think the plan itself was sound. It didn't reach far enough. In fact, it was fallacious to the extent that the plan didn't even seek to check out what was going on with, in the new trafficked areas. We were simply told that people won't turn left. When pressed and pressed, they finally said, well, we could put up a sign that says, "No left turn." I think that kind of a fix to the problem would be unattainable. More ingress, more ingress and egress. Here, I need to have you pay attention to the picture while I point out a bunch of things very, very quickly. First, the white area, the, that's blocked in at the top, is the lower edge of the property in question, and it's about 300, about 250 feet from Happy Valley Road. You see in the, just below that is the preschool area. Now, notice carefully on your, on your high-res screens there that where the blue lines are, are the exit points. From the south end of the property, you see, and I don't think this will reach that far, but yes, if you're looking, if the, if the public is looking, you can see that these lines here and here are exits. This exit goes by the preschool and daycare. That exit at the narrowest point is about 23 feet wide, and it goes through a commercial area. I don't understand about zoning, but it seems to me that having that kind of a high-traffic area right next to a school like that is not advisable. The three people I just happened to talk to outside that place at 7:30 this morning when they opened, all agreed with me. I didn't put them on any, any sign-up sheets because most of them weren't living directly in our rural area, but they still are seemingly against having that kind of traffic next to their little ones. Oh, I need to go back because that, this is the best, the square in the lower left-hand corner, this is the best slide to show you. I'm pressing. There it is. Okay, now, just the button. All right, the, the... I went too far. Forgive me. There. All right. In the lower left-hand corner is a blow-up of the 17th Avenue, a chunk of 17th Avenue showing where it is currently half-paved and half-not. The paved part's on the, on the west, and the non-paved part is, the dirt road is on the right. I measured that as well. The paved road there is 22 feet wide and cannot be widened, because nobody has dedicated the other half of the street. Had the same thing happen in front of my home on 15th Avenue. The city wanted to come in and pave the entire road. They paved half the road. It doesn't work. It especially won't work with high-traffic areas. 15th Avenue is not, in any case, a high-traffic area. This area is, and that width will just not suffice. Here you see a messed-up diagram, and the reason it's messed up is because we have created, through the plan that we, that was presented to you, we have created for ourselves a very complex entry and exit situation. It turns out that I call this an intersection with no controls, because you have traffic coming out of two exits, south hitting Happy Valley Road, then directly across from the main one that the applicant wishes to use as their main egress and ingress. I'm going to take this time. Directly across from it, and all these lines represent one of a possible move that an automobile would make, other than staying in the middle lane. What we see here is on the left-hand side, out of view, to the west, three lanes of Happy Valley Road. At this point, it's two lanes with a median in the middle. To the right, to the east, it no longer has anything but a old-fashioned two-lane road. And this kind of confusion with the traffic plan they have put together, not considering in the traffic plan other developments, which were mentioned by the, the applicant, they have not shown that they've accounted for the cross-linking of separate projects that'll affect traffic. We think these things need to be done. This is a slide that I think nails down some bad information that's been floating around. Supposedly, supposedly a study was done and to show how many people are in favor of this project. It was localized, much more so than any statistical value would account for. What we did was try to poll the entire population. That's what you do when you have a small population. We tried to poll the entire population. This is how much we succeeded on, and you see that the incredibly vast majority of people wish this project not to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon, for, you clearly worked incredibly hard on this. Mr. Graff, would you like your two minutes now or at the end of public comment?
Mayor, I can take it at the end of public comment. Thank you.
All right. We will open the public hearing on 175 and 176, so one hearing on both items. We will begin with Melissa Crawford, followed by Vinut Baban. Our third speaker will be Diane.
Thank you for your, for your time. I'm a resident on Parsons Road, which is the road behind this project, the next major road there. Part of the problem is not just this development, but what is happening in our area. So we're horse property, the smallest properties there are an acre and a half, up to five acres. So we're talking about an environment that has livestock, has horses, pulling and horse trailers in and out of the facility, and then you've got apartments going on. And, and the problem also is, this isn't the only apartment. So we have, in our area, we have the canal that block, that blocks our east side, and then we have three major roads to get out. We have 15th Avenue, 17th Avenue, Parsons that I live on that goes into 19th Avenue. We now have Toll Brothers and the bungalows going in on 19th Avenue. That is going to be feeding right alongside. We also have this proposed 226 apartments on 19th Avenue. There's a megachurch on 15th Avenue. We are becoming landlocked, and nobody seems to care. We've been, I've been on all the virtual meetings myself, trying to say our cause, and it feels like because we're county, it's hard to get a voice. So that's, I'm thanking you for the opportunity to do this, but we've got a major problem going on, and it is majorly changing our environment and where we live. We're not opposed to growth. We're not opposed to seeing the expansion for making more housing, but the two environments that are trying to collide are overtaking our entrances and our exits, where we are not able to leave, come and go. And the Toll Brothers and the bungalows projects haven't even started yet. So the added traffic that's going to come is So, the added traffic that's going to come is overtaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanute is next, followed by Diane, followed by Debbie Caruso.
Hello, Councilman. My name is Vanny Baban. I'm a resident at 26415 North 17th Drive. I'm here today to inform you that I am in support of the Happy Valley Project. I support SAM development. First, I was there for a couple of the meetings of the development. SAM has been responsible and engaged voluntarily, holding additional neighborhood meetings that require about the development. SAM has taken other steps in order to best fit in with surrounding communities such as providing building with the high step back to put highway for community resident. The taller building will be located closer to the other future multifamily use. Spacing the building apart to allow view corridors throughout the property, beautiful pool, and recreation areas. I support 100% SAM project, Happy Valley.
Thank you so much, and apologies for my pronunciation. Diane is next, followed by Debbie, followed by Margaret.
Good afternoon. I'm Diane Habener, and I live at 25312 North 16th Avenue. I am one parcel away from this. I live on two and a half acres. I have horses and run a dog and cat animal rescue. I have lots of complaints, but the main one is the traffic. Nobody has thought this out. We had, first of all, I feel totally disenfranchised because the Village Planning Commission had two meetings, and there was not a quorum at either one, so we did not get to address any of our grievances there at all. Then, at the planning commission that we were here at the other day, there were three people that voted against it. The three people that voted against this project all had personally come and spent some time on 17th Avenue and Happy Valley at rush hour. I challenge the city council to do the same. There's going to be no way that this is going to work traffic-wise, and I cannot believe that there have been any studies on this. That's probably my main concern, but just, this is going against your whole plan that was originally set up, that we had all agreed to, that the people that lived in the area agreed to. It's just wrong, and having two minutes to tell you my grievances isn't nearly enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie is next, followed by Margaret, followed by Charles.
Hi there. I'm Debbie Caruso. I'm from the Learning Experience. I am the franchise regional manager, representing the owners today, since they could not be here. The owner of the lot, Charles, is actually on the docket to discuss a little further some of the things that people had concerns about. The owners and I have discussed it and looked at the traffic and the flow that it's looking at, and we are not currently opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Margaret, and then to Charles.
Hello. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Margaret Langley. I live at 1607 West Parsons Road. I'm on the corner of Parsons and 16th Avenue. We use 17th Avenue and Parsons to leave our landlocked county island. My family and I returned to Arizona to start a homestead. We're a multi-generational homestead. My daughter, son-in-law, and my three grandkids, we all live on our property. We're beekeepers. We sell honey. We have chickens. We sell eggs. We, all three of us, have also full-time jobs. When we bought that piece of land, our dream was to homestead, become self-sufficient. We raise our own vegetables. Since we've lived there, I've already seen an increase in the traffic on our dirt roads, the amount of dust on our dirt roads, the damage to our dirt roads during the very rainy season. I know that those cars are not from our neighborhood. I work from home. My office window faces the street. All I can assume is that because of the increased traffic on 19th and Happy Valley, from the massive development that's occurred at Union Park, up to Joe Max, that might be a reason for the increase in the traffic. It's going to get worse. It's already been spoken about with the other developments that are coming. And I just want to appeal to your minds and your hearts. This is not compatible with our rural living. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles is next, followed by Allison.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Charles Eckert. Our offices are at 24925 North 15th Avenue in Phoenix. I'm the managing director of Red Hawk Development Corporation. We've developed most of the property in between 17th Avenue and 19th Avenue on Happy Valley Road. We've, part of the concept with the childcare center, and I've talked with Jim and Tally Stewart, who own the, operate the childcare center there, they wanted us to point out that, you know, all of the drop-off, the supervised drop-off and loading for the children occurs on the front of that building, which is the south side of that building. The driveway, the roadway that the neighbors seem to be concerned about is a drive aisle that is on the east side of the building. It does not interfere with the supervised dropping off and picking up of children in the area. And they've been very clear that this does not interfere with any of the, pose any kind of a danger to the students at the Learning Experience, or the parents, or the teachers. Couple of other points I want to bring up. As part of the development that we've done over the last 10 years, we started the projects there back in 2010. We brought 13 new businesses to the area. Those new businesses collectively have created over 200 direct new jobs, and hundreds of indirect new jobs, in addition to adding significantly to the sales tax base for the city of Phoenix and the area. These projects have brought in sorely needed infrastructure. We've widened Happy Valley Road from four lanes to six lanes, widened 15th Avenue, and widened 17th Avenue, which is the road on the east side of this project. Economically, these businesses have added significantly to the quality of the life in the local neighborhoods they serve and increased the values of, the property values significantly. Homes at Happy Valley will fill a significant gap in housing caused by incredible growth in the area of the TSMC plant, and it will benefit current and future residences in the neighborhood. For these reasons, we are supporting the project, and we are looking forward to having Homes at Happy Valley, and very excited to having Homes of Happy Valley be a part of our neighborhood.
Allison is next, followed by Marius.
Hi, I'm Allison McKee, and I am a resident of the unincorporated county island. And I want to point out a few things. First of all, I wrote the appeal, and we are asking for a continuance at this hearing. There are some errors in the staff report itself. First of all, in the staff report, it only reports one owner. There are three parcels, and two of the parcels are owned by Red Hawk. One of the parcels is owned by Happy Valley Investment Group. Happy Valley Investment Group was never even mentioned. Also, in the general plan map, it shows our county island as being three and a half to five residential units per acre in that staff report. We are not three and a half to five residential acres. We are one residential unit per acre. So, those are errors that are in the staff report itself. I do want to address something that happened at the planning commission level in, with the owners that are directly north of this proposed PUD. At that meeting, there was even a slide that showed that Kim and Wayne, who own that property, were in support of this project. They are not in support of this project, and that was grossly misrepresented to the planning commission. We even had a commissioner specifically ask about that parcel, and we were not able to rebut or address her concerns. There is a letter in the appeal from that parcel, and they state that they do not support it. So, that in itself, we really need you to look more carefully at this. We need you to look at the traffic that has not been addressed. We have not had an answer as to how they are going to keep this traffic off of our private dirt roads that we must maintain ourselves. The developer has not given us an answer other than, "We'll put up a sign." If any of you had bothered to come out, and I hope that some of you have, and look at our area and experience the traffic, like those three commissioners did, that voted against this, you would see that this is absolutely just ludicrous. From the five-story height to the traffic, the misrepresentation of support by our neighbors.
Thank you.
We need to step back, and we need our continuance. Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Marius is next, followed by Megan.
Sorry, I'm taller. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, mayor, vice mayor, good afternoon. My name is Marius Groza, and I reside at Union Park. As a local resident and a business owner in our community, I'm heavily invested in our neighborhood's growth, development, and prosperity. Today, I'm here to voice my support for the new apartment complex known as Home at Happy Valley Apartments, planned in our area by Shelter Asset Management. Shelter Asset Management has shown commitment to transparency, community engagement, and consultation from the very beginning. They voluntarily held more neighborhood meetings than required, demonstrating their willingness to align their plans with our community needs and interests. This kind of dedication and representatives is condemnable and indicative of a genuine desire to be positive, a positive addition to our neighborhood. SAM has meticulously designed the Home at Happy Valley Apartments project to harmonize with our existing community. They have proposed thoughtful adjustments like building height variance and step backs to respect our current skyline and neighborhood aesthetics. They also committed to spacing the buildings apart, maintaining the important view corridors through the property, a detail which emphasized the value they placed on preserving the character of our community. Their plans for improving exterior landscaping around the property and enhancing pedestrian experience along North 17th Avenue show an in-depth understanding of our neighborhood's needs. Notably, the addition of a fully detached sidewalk along North 17th Avenue will greatly improve the pedestrian safety and convenience. Shelter Asset Management will remain as the owner and manager of the Home at Happy Valley Apartments complex post-development, creating an ongoing relationship with our community. This commitment fosters trust and reassures us of their continued involvement and interest in our community's well-being. In conclusion, I fully support the Home at Happy Valley Apartments project, which is considered a planning, community-centered, design-responsive management and the potential benefits it will bring to our local businesses and community. This project truly deserves our collective endorsement. I urge you to see this project as a significant step forward in the evolution of our beloved neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Megan is next, followed by Jaronim.
Hi, Mayor and councilpeople. I am Megan Rock. I am a resident in the county island. I am a voice of many of our neighbors who are unable to attend today. As you hear from the support, it is not from the people in the county island. We currently live there. We purchased property in this neighborhood six and a half years ago. It was an acre and a half, and I am here to support the theme of this county island. It is a rural theme. We love our horses. We love our donkeys. They make noise. We love our roosters, our goats. We have children, and we paid a lot of money to get into this community. I daily fight with the traffic currently. I am on a corner of a gravel dirt road. My son can ride his bike to the mailbox. It is a private dirt road. It is only accessible by one vehicle. I challenge all council members to go back and look at the PowerPoint of the opposition that this is receiving from the county island. We are not appreciating this. It has been not open to us. I did not attend the first few meetings because I was not notified. I am raising three children, and I highly am appealing to your wisdom and your respect to our residents that are already there, who love their animals, love this community, and paid to get in that community. We do not want these high-rise apartments. It will intrude upon our privacy. It's a flat area. The five stories, you will be able to see my home. I do not wish for that. I own cows. I own goats. I understand farm life brings flies. The city authorities will be receiving complaints if this apartment goes in from quick apartment renters who do not understand our rural lifestyle about the farm noise and about the way farm brings. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaronim is next, followed by Linda. It was written Jaronim. I guess it's probably Jaronimo, but there's no O in what's this person registered.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Jaronim Mitch. My address is 1920 West Yearling Road, Phoenix, Arizona, 85085. I am here today to inform you that I am in support of the Home at Happy Valley Project and a supporter of SAM, the developer. SAM has been responsive and engaging voluntarily, holding additional neighborhood meetings than required. SAM has taken necessary steps that best fit the community, such as providing building height variance and step backs to pull height away from county residents. The taller buildings will be located closest to other future family, multifamily uses, spacing the buildings apart to allow view corridors through the property, improving the exterior landscaping around the property through the addition of trees, shrubs, and other plants. Also, improving pedestrian experience along North I-17th Avenue, including the addition of fully detached sidewalk along North 17th Avenue. SAM will remain the owner-manager of the property even after development's completion. As a result, they have a vested interest in maintaining relationships with the neighborhood, which improves community compatibility. I believe the more people that make this area their home, the more it will improve the surrounding commercial amenities as well as infrastructure. Again, I would like to reiterate my full support for the Home at Happy Valley Project and the developer SAM. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Linda is next, followed by Laurel.
My name is Linda Slay. I live at 25411 North Sixteenth Avenue. I am a resident of the county island. I do have animals on my parcel, as many of the people sitting over there with me do. Really, the main, main problem that we have with this is the traffic. The traffic study that the developer had was flawed because they did not consider Seventeenth Avenue an existing road. And the answer that we got in a meeting was, well, our people aren't going to go that way. You can't tell me these people can't look to the left, say, well, let's see, three to five minutes to get on Happy Valley, no cars that way. They're going on that. Non-county and city-maintained, private dirt roads that we have to maintain. And in the slides that Gordon showed you, you saw the malaria germs of the left-turn lanes with completely no stop signs, inadequate turn lanes, no, no, it's, I call it chicken in the left-hand turn lane, which sounds funny unless you're the one, you're trying to turn left onto Seventeenth Avenue, and someone's trying to turn left into into the apartments or whatever those are across the street. I've been like head-on with someone in the left-turn lane. We barely got past each other. There's no, there's no regulation, and that's without Toll Brothers, without the bungalows, without this project, and there's no, the city can't do anything, or they're not going to. The county can't. There's no improvements on Happy Valley Road scheduled in any time in the near future. And, I mean, Nineteenth Avenue and Happy Valley are the only ways to get out of this neighborhood. You must go on either Nineteenth Avenue or Happy Valley if you're going to go anywhere. And it's totally dangerous. I mean, you should try to turn left on Happy Valley during rush hour. And it's not just our lifestyle that's at stake here, but perhaps our very lives. And, you know, I'm sorry. Having lost someone to an accident, I wouldn't wish that on anybody. Not us, and not the new residents either. It's sorry, but thank you.
Thank you. Laurel is next, followed by Mike.
Thank you for your time. My name is Laurel Brody. I live at 25657 North Seventeenth Avenue. I am a county island resident. I have been one since 1988. I've seen so much. Nineteenth Avenue wasn't even paved when we moved there, so quite a lot of changes. I'd like to address another issue of this that causes us issues too, though. The developer states that the site has been designed to be compatible with the surrounding single-family uses. However, we aren't just single-family homes, as we were referred to over and over. We're rural, allowing for livestock, et cetera, and must be on an acre and a quarter site. We aren't naive, and we understand that likely any development of this property would involve a higher density than our R-43 zoning. Everyone keeps using the terms appropriate and compatible for this proposed PUD. That's where we think this is lacking reality. We aren't unsympathetic to the fact that a housing is needed, but our tiny county island has already been subjected to two large developments in process that drastically changed from our R-43 zoning and have yet to experience the traffic impact of that. We would ask that you disallow the proposed building heights of up to 65 feet and allow no more than the 30-foot that is currently zoned for. Staff analysis stated that the subject site is appropriate for residential uses at the proposed densities. They are achieving that density through height, however, which is at the expense of what is compatible and appropriate for the area. Developer states that they have drastically reduced height and depth standards, current zoning calls for a maximum 30-foot structure. They are wanting to put 55- and 60-foot structures located 600 to 800 foot from our 43 developed property. They reference 65-foot building as being tucked in. I hardly think you can just tuck in the highest building that would exist within a one-to-two-mile radius and sit 800-foot of horse properties. I did a lot of driving over the last week, specifically looking at building heights, focusing on apartment complexes up to Doug Valley, Union Hills, I-17, Seventh Street. Nowhere did I find a five-story building within an apartment complex, most are three, and don't exist in the backyard of single-family homes, let alone next to R-43 housing. The height in this area would be intrusive and would break precedent based upon observations. Every apartment complex I went and looked at had three-story, four-story buildings. So the five-story buildings I found, they're hotels on Whispering Wind. Those are the only five-story buildings you can find anywhere nearby. My last statement would be, if the I-17 complexes and the many, many other recently-built complexes can maintain three stories, we would at a minimum ask for the same considerations. However, the ideal situation for us would be one that conforms to what is already zoned in the immediate area, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike is next, followed by Kimberly. And then we will have Ben Graff, our final speaker. Do we have Mike Perry? All right, we will go to Kimberly and then Ben.
I live at 25919 North Seventeenth Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. I've been out in this area a little less time than Laurel. I moved out in December 1998, and the Nineteenth Avenue was still dirt then, too. We have seen a lot of developments. We've seen a lot of change, and we've all hit on the traffic. And I would like to say, the other thing that nobody is considering here is Nineteenth Avenue between Happy Valley and Joe Max Road is two lanes. When I-17 gets shut down, everybody comes over to Nineteenth Avenue to go north. Nineteenth Avenue at one point was backed up all the way to Union Hills. When Nineteenth Avenue gets backed up, all that traffic comes into our area trying to avoid Nineteenth Avenue. So they'll come down Seventeenth Avenue thinking that they can just go right over the canal, go on up. They don't. They they hit Seventeenth Avenue, it goes up to the canal, and they have to make a left to get back over to Nineteenth Avenue. This happens time and time again whenever I-17 gets shut down. Nobody's considering that. They're saying, hey, you got Happy Valley, you got Nineteenth Avenue, deal with it. I cannot make a left onto Nineteenth Avenue. I cannot make a left onto Happy Valley. I have to go make a right to get out of my neighborhood at all times. I mean, you know, maybe Saturday afternoon, Sunday, I can make a left, but other than that, it's purely make a right and move to get out, and then you go somewhere, make a left to get back into, go to Walmart, you know? If I turn on Nineteenth Avenue, I have to go right to go up to Joe Max, make a left, and then go back over down 23rd Avenue, our North Tower Parkway. We are, we are landlocked. We can't get out. It's, it's ridiculous. And I did make an effort. I reached out to Ben. I had him over to my house. I had not been informed. I had not got any letters in the mail from them about what was going on. I knew about it about a couple of months ago before we found out. And I reached out to him. I had him over to house. I said, what can we do? I said, what can we do? Can you make a road down behind Happy Valley to get, behind Circle K, to make your traffic exit on the Nineteenth Avenue? Can you keep the traffic off of Seventeenth Avenue, please? And he did say, we can only make a left. I said, can you make it only an emergency entrance for emergency vehicles only? Because half of the road is dirt, right there where they're going to be. They said they can't pave the whole from Happy Valley to the north end of their property because it's private property on the other side. It's all residential, so we can't pave that. So you're going to end up with dust in all these apartments. It's going to make more dust into our area, and dust is a concern in the valley. So we need to think about that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graff spoke for eight minutes, so you have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And Josh, if I could have the presentation, please, pulled up in the remote. I actually want to start by thanking Kimmy, who is the individual that was just up at the podium. She's absolutely correct. When we were basically notified at the second village meeting, so we had had two neighborhood meetings, we had had an initial village meeting with no opposition. When we were at our second village meeting and multiple county members showed up, and this was the first time that they had expressed any opposition, we immediately acted by holding extra neighborhood meetings, and Kimmy was one of the ones that hosted one at her home, so I want to thank her for letting us get to know her and her neighbors. And I want the council to know we were very hands-on. Once the county residents made it clear they had concerns, we were in their homes, we were meeting with them, we were holding special meetings. There's one item that needs absolute clarification. There was an accusation of a misrepresentation, and there certainly was no misrepresentation. What there was, was one of the biggest surprises in my career so far, which is, as we worked with the Hudgens for 10 months and reduced the height, guaranteed there'd only be a two-story here, put into the PUD a raised seven-foot wall just for their benefit, increased the landscaping for the Hudgens, but they came to the first village meeting, they testified in support of our case. We did show them at Planning Commission as in support, and in between Planning Commission and City Council, they signed the opposition petition. I can't explain it, but those are the facts. So there was not a misrepresentation. There was a change of mind. I do want to state on the record, however, I'm very proud to work with my client because despite that opposition letter from the Hudgens, we are 100% keeping every single benefit on the northern property within the PUD. We are not changing a thing. We are not changing a commitment made to the neighbors. I may have a couple of the clarifications, maybe they'll get answered in questions, but I want to respect the time, so I'll end there.
Thank you, Ben. Will you please leave this slide up, staff? Councilwoman, would you like me to keep the public hearing open or close it? Close it? We'll close the public hearing. We will first take item 175, and I will turn to Councilwoman O'Brien.
So, Mayor, I have some questions for Josh.
Please.
Okay. Josh, one of the speakers talked about staff reports and that there were errors. Could you please address that?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, I believe the first comment was related to the ownership that's mentioned in the staff report. The ownership that's mentioned in the staff report is Red Hawk Partners LLC. As the speaker noted, that is correct. There's also an abbreviation shortly after that that basically says "and others." It's common practice in the staff report where we have multiple owners just to list the primary one listed in the application, but all the owners are captured in the actual application. But from a formatting standpoint, we'll use the abbreviation ETAL just to recognize that there are other owners associated with the application. With respect to the general, the comment about three to five dwelling units an acre, that is the current designation on the general plan land use map. And the speaker is correct. That is not their actual zoning, but they, while, while the area is in the county, it is within the Phoenix Planning Area, and as such, the general plan land use map does apply, and the designation on their properties today is three and a half to five dwelling units per acre, but that is not their zoning.
Thank you very much, Josh. One of the other, a common theme has been the traffic. Can we please talk about what is going to happen to Nineteenth Avenue? And I asked this slide to be left up because, as you see, we have Toll Brothers coming and then bungalows at Norterra multifamily. As those developments occur, what will happen to Nineteenth Avenue?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, like the bungalows at Notora, Noterra rezoning case and the Toll Brothers multifamily case, this case has a rezoning, a condition on the rezoning to do and complete and get approved by the city, a traffic impact study. Those studies usually come with conditions for improvements in the area that are at the full cost of the developer. Not having the, the results of the Toll Brothers and Norterra projects right in front of me, I can certainly say with assurance that there, there are improvements coming to Nineteenth Avenue, and we'll see what the results of this study, but ultimately, some improvements on Seventeenth and Happy, Happy Valley would most likely be associated with any approved traffic study.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. I, too, was concerned about traffic in this area initially only having one ingress and egress near the daycare. And so I am the one who asked for us to have an additional ingress and egress on Seventeenth Avenue. Having heard the concerns of the county residents, I want to know if we can have the developers include, and maybe if Ben, you could step up over here, I'm going to check with Josh first, if it is okay to have a right-turn-only exit on Seventeenth Avenue, which would prevent the residents of the apartment complex from turning left onto Seventeenth Avenue in the form of what I believe is called like a pork chop. Is that possible?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, if it is the will of the council, you certainly could include a motion that moves to approve for the Planning Commission recommendation with an additional stipulation that limits ingress and egress on Seventeenth Avenue to right, right turns only.
And Ben, would the developer be willing to include that in the development or agree to that stipulation?
Is it back on? Okay. I, I just took a look over at my client. We did a kind of a psychic nod, and Mayor, Councilmember O'Brien, we would be in favor of the restriction as long as it only restricted egress, a right, right-hand turn exiting the property.
Yes, I apologize for not making myself clear. Only when exiting that somebody could come north on Seventeenth and turn left into the apartment complex, but when they're exiting the apartment complex on Seventeenth Avenue, they would only be able to turn right and go south to Happy Valley Road. Okay. And I know, Josh, you're going to hate me because I didn't write down that language, but you'll help me when it's time to make the motion, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Apologize, I want to get back to my notes. So, when, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
When this project came to me, one of the things that, it made me excited about supporting it is that it is attainable housing. And in our community, having sat on the Deer Valley Unified School District Governing Board for eight years and, and lived in that community for many, many years, attainable housing is so difficult. It's just, it's almost nonexistent. And I say that knowing that my daughter, who is a high school teacher in that district, there's no way she could afford to live in the very district that she teaches in. So in our current housing shortage in the city of Phoenix and in District One with all the development that is coming, it was with pride that I support this project. In addition, the Union Park area to the west has provided much of the work, work and some live play, I should say, the Norterra area even farther west, where we have work options and we have many play options with shopping and eating, and I'm proud to, again, like I said, bring more housing to this area for our community and for our city. So for that reason, I will be supporting these. I will move, sorry, I've lost all my notes. I move to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution with the amendment that the developer shall limit the access onto Seventeenth Avenue to right-out turns only.
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, if I may, you would need to make a motion on the general plan amendment first. The stipulation would be associated with the rezoning case, and so the general plan amendment would be per the Planning Commission and the adopted related resolution.
I apologize. So for 175, I move to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation, adopt the related resolution.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Guardado. I'm sorry. Guardado. Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Vieggo.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
176.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related ordinance. And now do I add the amendment, Josh?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, you could offer new stipulation number eight that states that the driveway on Seventeenth Avenue will be limited to right-turn-only egress and full ingress.
That.
And we did get a second from the Vice Mayor and Councilman Stark. Roll call. Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you all who participate in that important pair of agenda items. In today's meeting, we've now approved 226 units of housing. We'll add a plea that in the future, if people are signing petitions, we not do one per page because the packet today is 1,196 pages. We next move to two citizen petitions, beginning with 177, a petition from Mr. Morales, and Mr. Morales, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Ismael Morales. The reason I come to here for you today, and I decided to come here last minute because it wasn't online, but it's just very simple. I was very deeply enraged last time. I know that it is very hard for you guys as a body to limit public comment to certain items. It is very hard and very challenging to hear new things that come up, but I know that, you know, more than likely it could be denied, but I think it'll start a conversation amongst you guys to look into, look into many ways to promote public comment, especially when new items come up to you within the certain same subject. So I decided to write a petition, you know, knowing that maybe it is something for you to consider and something for you guys to, to actually to promote good government, to promote open government. And so it was very simple. It is to change the council rules and procedures, or at least attempt to have that conversation to at least, if there is a item that is being continued, that if there's new items, that that needs to be considered, that that needs to be taken care of. I know that was related to the Mobile Home Parks issue, but I'd not, that was, that was last time I'm relating to what it can come for, come to you guys in the future. So that is the reason why I ask for you to maybe either, you know, have this conversation that this should at least not, attempt not to happen. We should be promoting good government and good, open government and transparency. Thank you very much. If there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have some comments.
Councilwoman Pastor.
What happened on April 5th was not only shocking to me, but was a demonstration of, as the gentleman said, of, it wasn't a demonstration of good government. And regardless if we've heard the statement over and over, two hours, three hours, four hours, five hours, two seconds, one second, we were voted in by voters to listen. And so, and we were voted to also to do due diligence in allowing to people speak, especially when they sat in a meeting for over, I don't know how many hours, and then be told or be voted on by colleagues to say, no, we don't want to hear you anymore. We're still in the same situation of the trailer homes. We're still in the same situation as to today is the 31st, so today for some of the periwinkle residents, they will be leaving. And I know that they are working with them to ask how much more time they need. Same thing with Weldon Park, and it's an unfortunate situation, but as government, we're, we're supposed to help. And so I, I am just saying that I, I support your petition. I support your, your citizens' petition, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I agree. I don't know if there's going to be a motion or not, but I agree the public should never be denied the opportunity to speak on a subject, especially one that is life-threatening. So I appreciate the citizen petition being brought forward.
I will make a motion. I move to support the citizens' petition to change the, I believe I can, lost all my notes, but to accept the citizens' petition and change the code.
Second. I will not be supporting the motion. The City Council heard hours of testimony on this item. When it was brought back by a three-person memo, I asked Councilwoman Pastor, had anything changed? And she said, no. So it seemed that we had already heard hours of testimony on that item. I would also point out that the subcommittee cut off testimony, but for some reason, that has not been the focus of this particular petition. Would counsel like a roll call or a voice vote?
I'm going to respond to that. When I was met with the mayor, it was with a little anger because we did receive, we did write a three-person memo. We have the authority to do that. We have the ability to do that, change the rule. And she asked why we did the three-person memo, and she asked, did anything change? And I said, I don't think anything changed, but we wrote it so that people could be heard. And secondly, so that Councilman Garcia, that was his last meeting, and would be able to hear the community and be able for his final vote to vote the way he wanted to or with the community. And that's what happened. And then you saw what rule came into play. So, thank you.
Many lawyers disagree on this item about whether you can bring something back to the council when no one on the prevailing side has asked to reconsider it, but we did move it forward to avoid a legal issue. But many lawyers think that our city council rules do not allow you to hear the same thing twice unless a person on the prevailing side has asked for it to be reconsidered. All those in favor of Councilwoman Pastor's motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays. Carrie? Item 178 is a petition by Jeremy Thacker. Mr. Thacker, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Both of my citizen petitions are based around the question of whether Prop 207, the Property Protection Act, not the marijuana bill, prevents the city from implementing land use laws that are directly related to public health and safety regarding transportation and traffic control. The answer to that question is no, based on a plain reading of Prop 207, all case law precedent, and even a report commissioned in 2009 by the city, along with the EPA, City of Mesa, Urban Land Institute, Gamage and Burnham, and Valley Metro. So instead of addressing the specifics of my requested changes, the staff report implies that ambiguity and vagueness exist and determinations are hard to discern. Nothing could be further from the truth here. My requests are specific and directly related to health, public safety, transportation, and traffic control. My requests are not NIMBY or anti-development. In fact, they are pro-TOD, pro-affordable housing, and pro-density. Specifically, I request that lot sizes be reduced, we don't have superblocks, that we don't, and this is all in transit-oriented developments, districts only, next to the light rail, that we don't allow these investments to be completely thrown away and be penny-wise and pound foolish. And that's exactly what we're doing. So that, the other things that are directly related to health are not having completely gated communities that prevent pedestrian access, that we don't allow free parking that encourages more vehicles and decreases public safety as well, that we increase ridership by lowering parking minimums or eliminating them. These are all directly related. So the city staff report seems to be misguided and misrepresented in this area, stating that these are hard to answer when they've already answered themselves. And anyone with, I'm glad we have a lawyer here that can look at it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I know right now there is a bill going through the legislature that may impact what Jeremy is proposing. Josh, do we have any updates on that? Or maybe, maybe you're not the right one to ask, but I'm sure you're keeping abreast of that.
Councilwoman Stark, Josh is coming to the table.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, I, I don't know the exact status of the bill, but what I will say is that we're having productive conversations with our Office of Internal Government Relations about how we can address some of the, the issues that have been brought forth at this, this session. What I will also add is that there, there are text amendments moving forward through the public hearing process this month. One of them is parking reductions, and as part of our work program for TOD and Walkable Urban Code, we do have planned updates for that moving forward. But happy to check in with our intergovernmental team on the exact status of the bill.
So I guess, Mayor, if I might, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get at is that maybe it's, it's premature to, to try to address some of the concerns of Jeremy until we know what the legislature does, but in the meantime, I think it's important that we get him involved in our general plan update. Some of the issues he's mentioning, I think, are important to incorporate into our general plan, and perhaps we can work over the summer on some of these issues and then better address the concerns that Mr. Thacker's trying to get at.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, we're, we're happy to work with Mr. Thacker to walk him through what text amendments are currently through the, going through the process. One of them is a parking reduction and a significant parking reduction along light rail, but also talk about what other text amendments we have as part of the work program moving forward.
Right. And then perhaps seeing what the legislature does, we may have to do some additional text amendment, so maybe it's just a matter of timing before we can really thoroughly address some of the comments that Mr. Thacker's trying to get at. So I would suggest that perhaps we work on this over the summer. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It's Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I'm actually have been working with Jeremy Thacker and a whole constituency regarding some of this language and pieces. One of the things that I did notice, Jeremy, was that, and I think this is not pertaining, this is pertaining to the citizens' petition, but I would like to request that this petition be changed from creating a separate zoning overlay to amending the Walkable Urban Code. My recommendation would be for us to get together, to work with Josh, and map out an approach of what that would look like and what the implementation would be. And be able then to meet with our constituencies that are having concern about the TOD, especially in Central Avenue, and be able to maybe put some meat to, to the TOD or the Walkable Urban Code. So those are my requests on the citizens' petition. The, I think what's going to happen is we'll see what the legislature does, and if we don't get moving and recognizing some of these things, we will be back at the same place next year, so, thank you.
Thank you for being willing to put in the time, so that, okay?
If you don't mind. Yeah, and Laura, I love, Councilwoman Pastor, I'd love to work with you on it too. I actually have a case that will be coming up along Dunlap, that's going to be dealing with the TOD, and so I too would like to look and revisit some of the issues within the ordinance. So if I can lend a hand, I would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that includes the agendized portion of our meeting, and I'll now turn to our city attorney to explain public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the City Council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the City Council to listen to the comments but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Our first speaker is Leonard Clark, followed by Beatrice Johnson.
I just, several things I wanted to talk about. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Leonard Clark. I just think we should send out a red alert to our staff because we have 30 school districts, from what I understand, approximately 30 school districts located in the fifth largest city of the United States, which is Phoenix, Arizona. The Arizona Department of Education has just put out that the skyrocketing uncapped vouchers, which now other studies are showing three out of four parents who already have their children in private schools are the ones using these vouchers, are going to go and cost the state of Arizona by next year $900 million. Now, I'm here independently, I'm not with other organizations, but as a concerned person about our public education, which we do know there are other individuals who do not like public education because our educators, they feel are partisan and put out a left-wing perspective, but this is not entirely true. It's not a political thing. We have Republicans who are teachers, we have Democrats, but please, we have 30 school districts here. Our state, this is looking a lot like the year 2000 with Mr. Jeff Grosskost, God rest his soul, with alt, alt-fuel energy, but at least that was a Republican governor who led that fiasco with a Republican-controlled legislature. But this affects citizens. The second thing I would like to talk about, I'm non-indigenous, but as an, I consider myself a non-indigenous ally. I've heard a lot of talk about locating, locating the bodies of children located, located across Indian, or I don't even like the term, these crimes against humanity, former Indian schools, Phoenix Indian School Park. The mayor has yet to call, and I ask Secretary of the Interior, Deb Haaland, to use the sonar, penetrating ground sonar that they've used in Canada. Nobody has done that, and that land is going to be developed, which part of it is owned by corporations. We need to do something about that. Now, while I was there, I saw these plaques that were put up in 1993, and that is definitely whitewashed history. They speak of the school in glowing terms, as if the children were sent there of their own volition. Their hair wasn't cut, and it wasn't some type of form of ethnic cleansing. That needs to change. Those plaques need to come down. That is false history up there. Also, while I was there, I want to let you know, I had a young man come up to me with a gun on his hip. Now, he didn't do anything illegal because in the great state of Arizona now, because the Second Amendment apparently has turned us back into the Old West, the young man brandished the weapon, trying to intimidate me. And it just seems everywhere we go now, the shootings are going up, the crime, the hate, people don't feel they can trust the police, and I, look, I'm not for defunding the police, but we do need police reform. They put their lives on the line, police officers have lost their lives. But at the same time, many people feel that you guys have not done the reforms necessary, and around the country, so people feel they cannot turn to the police and the others. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Beatrice Johnson, followed by Elizabeth Venable.
I am Beatrice X. Johnson. I am the baby sister of Dorothy Jean Dale Chambers. My message today is for the mayor and the city manager and city council because it is your employees that continue to violate our family's victims' right in the death of my sister. I am not here to- I'm not here to talk about any legal process. I am here, every city council meeting, all the way from the Bay Area, to address the continued disrespect, disregard of our family's victims' right, which continues to be violated. Our family was denied our family's victims' right from day one, April 26, 2022, the night my sister was killed, and Phoenix City Detective Taryn Campbell had all information but did not notify our family. Our victim rights violated on March 1, 2023, when Abaska Pekovic was arrested, released without seeing a judge, with two counts of bodily harm, with two deaths, and a one first-degree failure to appear on February 7, 2023, when Pekovic failed to appear in court for an arraignment. I had to ask the judge for a warrant, and when I finished, I asked Prosecutor Hillary, couldn't you have done that? She replied, yes. And I said, but you did not. Why? Our family victim rights were violated while in a meeting with Prosecutor Hillary. She said it would be hard to prosecute Pekovic because, because a case like his is hard to get a conviction. Then Hillary said, there was a woman who was driving and killed a police officer, and they were not, we were, could not get a conviction. The judge threw it out. So I asked her, are you talking about that innocent Latino woman who was trying to adopt a baby, and the Phoenix Police Department in Maricopa County hunted her down for three years, took her through pure hell, when they had the truth and video all along? I asked her, are you talking about that case? And why would you address our family with that case? I guess Prosecutor Hillary did not know I paid attention when I come to Phoenix. Our family was completely traumatized by that meeting and her statements to us. I have been asking my victims' right advocates since January for a meeting with Hillary boss. A supervisor named Sarah called me to tell me that the city prosecutor office represents the city, not your family. I asked Sarah, do you, do you represent my sister? And she said, yes. I said, I told her my sister is dead. We are the victims of her death. I am still waiting for that meeting with Hillary's boss. Our victims' rights were absolutely violated on April 26, 2023, on a one-year anniversary of my sister's death. I informed Prosecutor Hillary that on March 1, 2023, because Pekovic did not see a judge, our victim rights were violated. She agreed.
Time is up. Sorry. The, the time is up. Sorry.
I'm not going to read it all, so don't be rude to me, because you wasn't rude to them. All I'm going to say is that I'm asking for the mayor, because her city, her, her chief of staff got my number to call me, but he has not called me, and I'm requesting that meeting to the city council.
Okay.
You only did that to me. I sit here and watch so many people go over. You're so rude.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Elizabeth Venable, followed by Frank Urban.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Venable. Some people are familiar with me, some people are not. I think people in the council might be a little bit more familiar with me. I'm here to talk a little bit about a variety of subjects, but the first topic I would like to address is, is what does consent mean? And so I looked at Cornell Law, and their definition of consent, it says, consent means that a person voluntarily and willfully agrees in response to another person's proposition. The person who consents must possess sufficient mental capacity. Consent also requires the absence of coercion, I'll say that again, coercion, fraud, or error. Consent is an essential constituent of a contract in a defense to a tort. However, consent is generally not a defense in criminal charges. However, the reason why I wanted to read that definition of consent, without going on to the parts about sexual assault, is because I have become aware that there is a problem with people's possessions being soared theoretically by the City of Phoenix under our lawsuit, Fund for Empowerment v. City of Phoenix. And I have become aware also that people may be, and this is from information gained from a CBI supervisor, by one of our organizers, that people may be being forced to relinquish some of their property in response to an offer of shelter, and a shelter that they may or may not, that may or may not be appropriate to them. And the reason why I say shelters, and I know I only have thirty seconds left, the reason why I say shelters may or may not be appropriate for people is, especially people with serious mental illness, often are kicked out in the back end, you know, a week later or half a day later, if they're placed in an inappropriate placement. They're generally either placed in a hundred percent sobriety or a Fentanyl hotel. It's one or the other, right? And neither is an appropriate placement, and they're kicked out on the back end. So all I would say is that think about, I'm sorry, I'll wrap it up. Think about what consent means and if it's actually consensual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Frank Urban, and then our final speaker is Jason Kelly.
Hello, council members. My name is Frank Urban. I would like to speak on housing and the fact that I believe wholeheartedly that you should take like five percent, only five percent to ten percent of the safety budget and put it into affordable housing. That'll go a long way to helping out. And with that, I'll close. Oh, and I'd also like to mention the 2024 General Fund. I think you guys can do a lot better. And with that, I'll close.
Thank you. Final speaker is Jason Kelly. All right. We don't have Jason Kelly. We're adjourned. Thank you.